The primary item on our agenda tonight is the Transportation System Plan and the associated amendments to the Oregon City Municipal Code. The order of the proceedings will be, we're going to have a staff presentation, PowerPoint presentation of the transportation plan, and then we will take comments from the public. If you would like to speak, please fill out a visitor's card, and we will limit the speaking time to three minutes per person unless you're representing a neighborhood, and then we'll give you five minutes for that. And then after we've had public comment, we will transition into a work session. The public is welcome to stay for the work session, but the work session will be primarily a time of the commissioners asking questions and getting clarifications from the staff and those that are responsible for the presentation. So we'll move ahead with our presentation.
Laura, were there any public comments not related to the TSPs?
There are not.
Thank you, Chair Kidwell. I'd like to welcome everyone to the first public hearing of the Transportation System Plan. We've gone through a very long process, and we're pretty excited to be taking it through the public hearings process tonight as the first hearing. After I'm done speaking, I'll hand over to John Lewis real quickly to introduce himself as our public works director, and then Laura and I will do a quick PowerPoint presentation explaining some of the findings in the staff report and where that came from and some of the regulations that this Transportation System Plan is required to have concurrence to. After that, Carl Springer with DKS will be doing a little wrap-up presentation on the Transportation System Plan. Some of you have been to previous meetings, and Planning Commission is going to be a little bit of a recap, but we'll try to make it quick, though this is the first night, so we don't want to leave anybody out of the loop. And please do ask questions, Planning Commissioner clarification, and then at that point, we will continue the hearing to the next Planning Commission meeting and break for the work session.
Thanks, Christina. So, there we go, we're getting ready to go here. So, we've been before the Planning Commission for two previous meetings. This is another meeting. I think it's going to give us an opportunity to respond to some of the comments that we weren't able to respond to last time and take any more that come up at this meeting. I know this is fairly short with regard to presentation, and again, I think we've got all the right people in the room today to answer questions, and proceed.
Thank you. This is a legislative file which is a little bit different than you're used to as Planning Commission requires judicial files. This is an amendment to the ancillary document to our comprehensive plan, the Transportation System Plan. It was previously adopted in 2001, and this is our update in 2013. The goal of this presentation is to encapsulate a little bit of the findings that were in the staff report, showing how we have compliance with the applicable code and direction of DLCD, ODOT, and Metro and some of the other jurisdictions that have a place at the table for this.
So, Transportation System Plan essentially looks at how we get around the city, and we want to update our plan to make sure that we can continue to get around the city as quickly and efficiently as possible. We want to balance all of our modes of transportation, such as driving and walking and transit and freight, in the system. So, our transportation plan has two parts. We have the actual document itself, and then we'll also have associated code amendments, which we talked about at our last work session. Those identify specific projects. We went through quite a long process over the past year to work with the public and citizens to identify places where we could improve our system in the future. We came up with a project list. Carl will talk about this in a bit more detail. From that, we came up with goals, objectives, criteria to figure out which projects to fund, since we aren't proposing to add any additional fundings, just what is already anticipated to come through system development charges and other fees. We have quite a bit of criteria for the Transportation System Plan. They're identified on this list. The one you're most familiar with is our statewide planning goals and our Oregon City Comprehensive Plan, which we updated in 2004. So, we had updated after our last Transportation System Plan was created. The findings for all of those are in the staff report, and they're also available online at orcity.org.
So, what's changed since 2001? A lot, but some of the key points. New requirements have been integrated at the Oregon Transportation Plan, the Oregon Highway Plan, and Metro's RTP. And because of that, we, as this new update, we need to comply with those. Some of the key transportation projects from the 2001 plan have been completed, such as the Highway 213 Jug Handle or the Beaver Creek Road to Highway 213 project. The urban growth boundary was expanded in three locations. Our city comprehensive plan was updated, and when Metro updated their regional transportation functional plan, they sent out a schedule for all local cities to adopt their plan, and we are on that schedule.
Just for the record, could you make sure, at least once, when we do initials, just say it so that the listening audience at home who might not know what an RTP is?
Yes, Regional Transportation Plan.
Okay. So, our current Transportation System Plan is a little bit different than our existing Transportation Plan. We've updated, as I referenced before, our goals and objectives. We went through and had a stakeholders advisory committee. We also had a technical committee who are able to review all of those goals and objectives of our TSP. Those were also posted on our website for the public comment as well. Some new items in our TSP are criteria for street sections, and we wanted to be more explicit about what street sections we wanted and allow the flexibility to have context-sensitive streets. We also have some mobility targets that are revised, an increase in connectivity, which you'll see through our code amendments and in the TSP as well. Those lists of projects have been updated since our past TSP, and we also wanted to acknowledge our existing constraints within our city, so we know that moving forward, we can't have this ideal street throughout the city. We can't have perfect pedestrian connectivity everywhere. We sort of have to figure out how to upgrade our system as best we can.
With the fiscal, I mean with the funding strategy that's in place?
Correct.
So, where are we? Today, March 25th is the, well, actually, that's incorrect.
The work session is after.
Oh, after, okay. So, tonight, we have the first of the hearings. We'll continue the Planning Commission hearing to April 8th, have the work session at the end of this evening. Planning Commission work sessions are set for April 9th and May 7th, and anticipated city commission hearings are May through June.
So, our goal for today between the hearing and then our work session after the hearing is to understand any problem or concern you may have with the TSP and address that tonight or get back to you with those comments at next meeting, so hopefully we can get a recommendation for approval next meeting.
Could you possibly pull the microphone closer to you?
So, with that, we recommend that you keep the public hearing open, listen to all testimony from the public, and then continue the hearing to April 8th. And then after that, we'll have our work session. If the public would like to contact city staff to talk about projects in greater detail, they can, or they can go to our project website, octransportationplan.org. On the screen, you'll see those little green cards, which is what we mailed out, over 10,500 of those, to all properties within our urban growth boundary. And then, as requested from the public, John Lewis also sent out additional notices to properties on Holly Lane outside of our urban growth boundary.
And tonight, we'll be entering the staff presentations we'll hear tonight into the record, as well as public comments and everything else that has been attached as part of the agenda for this evening.
One item that you had requested and that we have this meeting are that chart. We did change the titles on that chart to likely to be funded or not likely to be funded, and copies of that are placed on the dais. We also have an updated code amendments. They'll probably be updated again at the next hearing on April 8th, but we're getting to a more concrete code. Items that have been changed since the last time you saw it appear in red, and they're also posted online as well.
Where's the copy set up here that shows funded and likely to be funded?
The thick packet.
The only thing that we got is this up here.
Oh, I will get it to you then.
Do you have one?
Nope. We will get that.
And it's posted online as well.
They're holding out on us.
So, with that, oops, we would like to hand this over to Carl Springer with DKS.
Before you do that, I did have one question, and just a question of curiosity. Are you going to, or is Carl going to, give the people a recap of the meetings that led up to this Transportation Plan?
Carl will do that.
Okay, great.
Yep. So, let me get Carl's presentation up for him.
Hi, Carl. How are you?
I'm good.
Good.
I go on vacation tomorrow, so I'm really good. Good evening, Chair and Commissioners. What you have tonight is a slimmed-down version of what we presented a few weeks ago when I was here. Thought it'd be helpful for those in the audience who haven't really had a chance to catch up to what's going on quite yet, so it's a quicker overview of the process that a TSP is and a TSP being a Transportation System Plan. So, I'm going to touch on those items shown on the screen there. This is the essence of the process. We are at the tail end of the process, having spent a bit over a year and a half, approaching two years this summer, working on this update. The interesting thing is there's a technical piece, committees involved with the reviewing the technical work, and all the while, the documents that we completed on an interim basis were posted online on the city's website. So, we were getting comments from the committees and from the public at the same time, as well as staff reviews and coordinating agencies. So, there's some statistics here on the sheet that shows you how many documents and meetings, so a series of stakeholder meetings and community meetings. A lot of outreach has gone on through this thing, and so that, it's helpful to try to get the word out. I gotta say, for a guy who's done a lot of TSPs, they aren't very exciting, so it's hard to get a lot of energy riled up until right about now, so, but you do your best. You know, you get out there and you talk to people as best you can. So, we are at the point where we've got a document that's pending for your recommendation for approval. The basic process that we use when we're looking at the transportation system, there's lots of pieces that go into it, as Laura mentioned. We're basically trying to find a way to serve your needs in a cost-effective and efficient way, provide for not only driving, the motor vehicle driving public and the freight public, the walking and biking and transit public. So, the diagram on the right just kind of synthesizes that a bit. We're looking for the kind of the low-cost, high-efficiency solutions first, what we'd call management-level solutions, and then we work our way down to looking for connections to the existing streets and trail system that you have, to extend those into areas that are growing, or to connect those where there's gaps in the system. Then finally, at the bottom, we get to the more ambitious and costly projects, where you're talking about new roadways, widening your existing roadways. All those things are significant dollar investments and can be quite a, something that the city has to approach fairly carefully. So, one of the difference between this plan and the last time the plan was done in the early 2000s, late 1900s, or 1990s, 1900s, that sounds really old, is that this is a plan that deliberately looked at how much money you're collecting and tried to match up what you're going to construct with that money. So, the professional jargon for that is financially constrained, so there is a cut line in the project list that says, "This group of projects are likely to be funded, and this group of projects are not likely to be funded." And it's an important distinction for the general public, because you put these lists and these maps out, and people get the idea that the city's going to be building a lot of stuff. But it's really a pretty short list on there that is expected to be built as an outcome of this plan update, and I thought I'd draw your attention to that. So, you've seen this before. This is the goals. This is the new and improved set of goals for the Transportation Plan. The new pieces that you haven't had before that I'll mention, maybe bullets, three, enhance health and safety of residents, sustainable transportation, which is not only you can afford to fund it and maintain it, but it's also good, and there's also other benefits to the community from a sustainability point of view. So, for each of those goals, we came up with performance measures and ranked the projects accordingly, so the ones that delivered more value to the community ranked higher. I'm not going to go through all the projects. There's a nice set of maps and a list of projects out in the lobby. I do have some images in a bit, but I wanted to really show you the summary here. So, we've got all kinds of projects represented in this plan, from driving to walking to what a new category called "family-friendly," which, as we mentioned a couple of weeks ago, is focused on giving neighborhoods a connective route that's not, it's a little more friendly to deal with than the arterial system. So, if you want to walk or ride your bike, we're trying to identify routes that you can do so more conveniently and safely. If you had unlimited budgets, you'd have about 360 projects, $220 million, but unfortunately, the city doesn't have $220 million between now and the year 2035. It has quite a bit less, so we had to prioritize the projects and develop a cut line. The other thing I would draw your attention to is where the money is going. So, the pie on the top right corner, about 20 per sixth, if you just did a head count of how many projects are, about a quarter of the projects are strictly driving, the rest are a mix of biking, walking, and other kinds of uses. Unfortunately, as you look in the bottom right, road projects account for three-quarters of the dollars, whereas the other three-quarters add up to a quarter. Did I throw you on that one? But basically, bike and walking and transit and trails are much, much less expensive per linear foot than roads. Roads are the most expensive thing out there. So, how is this going to be paid for? And this is an important fact. Most of these improvements that are in the plan that we've identified as likely to be funded will be paid for by growth, frankly. As the city grows, there's projects identified to facilitate that growth, to give them the facilities, the road improvements, the trails, the bike lanes, that kind of thing that they need, according to the current set of city standards. There's a small portion of monies the city hasn't allocated yet that could also be used to construct new projects as well, or it could be dedicated to maintenance, depending on what the city directs on that. So, it's important to understand that there's not this big pot of money untapped by the city that's going to be allocated to capital projects. Really, to build projects, it's going to rely on growth. If growth doesn't come, a lot of those projects will not be built. That's the up and down of that. So, but still, growth doesn't pay for everything. There's quite a shortfall that needs to be dealt with, or those projects just don't get paid. So, if you stick with the funding streams that you currently have, you're not going to be able to pay, build about half of the projects that are on the list. And so, we're not recommending increasing funding as a result of this plan. That's an action or an option that the city could pursue at a later date. That's not bundled with this at all. So, we're just trying to lay it out exactly how it's going to be. Let's see, this next slide, let's see, we kind of repeat myself a little bit. The 14 million and 98 million of projects that are not eligible through SDC. Maybe that's a distinction I should point out. So, not all projects are even eligible to be constructed through an SDC, and I think Planning Commission are aware of that. The city has what you call deficient condition, so it's substandard, it isn't working right, or some other way is below standards. SDC dollars can't go to fix that. SDC dollars generally go to new facilities is where they go to. So, street extensions.
Carl, why is that the case?
It's the state law that requires that. It dictates how SDC dollars get built, so that when development comes in, the contribution they make to the community goes towards facilities that support that growth, as opposed to fixing some problem on the other side of town. That's basically the mechanism that's been in place, and so you have to kind of deal with that. And so, we considered that as we went through this, and so what will happen is most of the projects that we have identified that will be funded by growth will happen in those growth areas as opposed to elsewhere in the city. I have to come up with another mechanism to fund those projects.
Well, Carl, I just want to clarify. So, when we collect SDCs from single-family residents or commercial developments, that money isn't necessarily set aside for that particular neighborhood. It may apply to a boulevard in the area, but it's not, we don't have different accounts that would kind of save that money for a particular neighborhood. We've got one SDC fund, and we try and allocate that money where the, you know, plan requires it or suggests it should be spent.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. Hope I didn't confuse you there.
Has the city ever been challenged on that, you spending money someplace where the developer thinks he shouldn't be with his money?
I guess I don't know, Bob. I haven't, Tony might have some insight into that. No?
Not that we're aware of.
I haven't seen that in other jurisdictions. It's a perfectly common way of dealing with it. Basically, what you're doing is you're coming up with a list of projects that are citywide, and the city staff has discretion on where the next bundle of money gets spent. They only are limited on what they can spend it on, it has to be one of the projects on the list. So, they can assess where the need is greatest.
Clarifying that one more time in your conversation. In other words, a developer goes and makes a development. They pay their system development charges, and that doesn't necessarily help them with road improvements or anything into their development. It goes into a pot, and it could go elsewhere, not to the one that that developer is working on.
Actually, I can, I think I can comment on both of those questions. First, I'll just talk to Tom's, and then I'll respond to Commissioner Mahoney's. You have to separate both things. There's the, you have a land use application for a developer. They are required to pay their proportional share and fix the street system that is directly impacted by their development.
That's outside system development charges.
Right, that's outside. Now, they also pay, as a new development, system development fees that go into fixing the system, the entire system. So, you have to kind of break out. Oftentimes, new development pays in both ways. They're paying system development fees, and as part of a land use action, if it's through their, maybe a budding street improvements, or through like a transportation impact study, they may have immediate fixes that they need to do for the opening day of the business for the application.
So, clarifying that then, it's kind of like social security or Medicare. You're putting so much, you're putting so much money in.
No, it's not.
Well, kind of, I'm saying, you're putting so much money in. Your employer's putting some money in.
Well, no, they're paying.
I didn't mean to go it that way. I'm just saying that, okay, wrong analogy.
Sometimes, they are paying twice, not sense.
That's what I'm getting at. So, sometimes, they're paying not just theirs, but elsewhere too, so they're kind of...
Because the system development charge, you have to think system-wide, this outside.
You've got to think that the development, the new residents will use more than the roads just in their immediate neighborhood. They're going to use the roads of the whole city. So, they pay to maintain a portion of those bigger roads, as well as just the roads in their own development.
But system development charges is more than just roads, right? Sewers, it's all kinds of system development.
No, this is transportation.
This is just transportation.
Well, system development charges, to me, go for everything.
Right, well, there's many types of system development charges. I think we're specifically talking about this.
Transportation only, okay.
Now, for Commissioner Mahoney's, when I...
I take my question back.
Well, actually, no, it's a really good question, though, and people have asked it before, and I recall a conversation with Jerry Johnson, with Johnson Gardner, he's an economist, and as part of the Park Place Concept Plan, there was a question of, can we kind of hold all the SDCs for the Park Place Plan and our own, like, specific Park Place project list, and so only, all the money for Park Place Development stays in Park Place? Well, that sounds like a great equitable idea. What Jerry Johnson did have trouble with, he said oftentimes with small cities like us, when you do that and you create all these little, kind of think of it like all these little bank accounts, it sometimes can come back at you when you have an ability to get grant funding for a project you weren't planning on, but something came out and you're restricted from these pots. You're pretty much handicapping to take advantage of situations that you weren't aware of at the time. So, he really, I remember, he really, really, really recommended against that as a city, especially our size, to ever have a geographic SDC reason for that fact, is we have such a finite amount of money, and the more you handicap us, the more likely we would be constrained on taking advantage of a Transportation System Plan project. I mean, the Jug Handle is a perfect example. We didn't think we didn't get the funding, we didn't think it was going to be anytime soon. Suddenly, you know, Obama passes a very large pot of money, and we were able to scramble and get funding for that 213, I mean, 13 Jug Handle project. And if we had kind of these separate pots of money, we may not have been able to do that, but we were able to get some quick action. So, I think that's some of the recommendation that we received in the Park Place Plan. I think it still is a good, good direction of be very careful when you start breaking up projects into areas.
Thanks for that explanation. I wasn't trying to make a political statement. I was trying to make a comparison of where the money comes from.
But it's one of those great statements where that sounds great, but then you realize the devil in the details when you do something like that.
Thanks.
All right, I'm nearly done. Well, you know, I think I'm done. So, we talked about this already. There's two categories, likely to be funded and not likely to be funded, and those are the distinctions that are shown on the maps and the charts. And I'm not going to go through these, but they're sliced up into six different maps. The first one is specific improvements at intersections. The second is street extensions, which are frankly very few. They're mainly in the concept plan areas that have already been discussed by the city. These others are what I'd call expansions, where you're making improvements to an existing street, or you're expanding intersections. Bike solutions, oh, I can feel the pain, walking solutions, and those are all in detail out in the lobbies, and I don't, I think there'll be a better view of the issues than what you can see on the screen. So, a handful of code changes that was talked about when I was not here the last time. So, we're looking at changes in the street design standards, spacing standards for both intersections and driveways. We'll continue to talk about the mobility standard. We introduced a new idea about using a volume to capacity ratio, that's the V slash C there. We're still working out with staff a good hybrid of those two things, so that it'll work effectively at the development review stage, and then, of course, parking and the loading zone pieces that was talked about last time. So, I think that's the end of my quick overview piece, and I can stop there unless you have any other specific questions.
Site distance clearance at intersections in residential neighborhoods, is that something that would apply in this, in this study? For people out walking, or even just trying to nose themselves out in an intersection that's got a car parked here and a car parked there, and they can't see?
There are design standards for what a safe intersection site distance is. Is that your question there? The city does have those. The question is, how do they maintain those, and what kind of enforcement policy do they have? I mean, a lot of times, it's the culprit is things that are parked where they shouldn't be parked, or there's landscaping that's overgrown, that kind of thing. That's more of an enforcement thing than it is a plan thing.
Or the vehicle's too tall.
There's that.
And that can be found in section 10.32 of our code for traffic site obstructions, and we did add a section in 1204 of our code amendments, just alerting people to verify that that site distance could be met in 10.32. So, we added a cross-reference to that in our code changes.
I have a question. I was one of those who commented on this last time.
Yes.
Where it said funded, but I'm still wondering, where it says likely to be funded. Likely, to me, means that it's probably going to happen in some sort.
Right.
Sort of, in that terminology, because on here, I see things like Park Place Concept Plan, I see the Beaver Creek, and both of those annexations have gone down twice for Beaver Creek, three or four times for Park Place, and I keep wondering, how could that be likely funded? I mean, if the citizens still feel uncomfortable, how could that be likely?
Well, it is a plan through the year 2035. Citizens' race change, attitudes change. The point is, if they choose to annex it, if that growth does occur, there'll be a funding stream to actually construct those improvements. The ones that fall below the line, that are not likely to be funded, they have no such option like that. It doesn't matter, I mean, there's no obvious source for constructing those unless the city scrambles for a grant, that kind of a thing. But we didn't account for that in our forecasting of revenue. We didn't make any assumptions about their success rate.
While you were talking, I was looking through this, and it seemed like almost everything in the first several pages was likely to be funded, and I've gone, wow, that's going to be...
But there's some that are short-term, long-term, medium, so they're, the long-term may not be likely. I mean, I would just guess that.
The caveat there is...
in the first several pages was likely to be funded, and I go, wow, that's gonna.
But there's some that are short-term, long-term, medium, so they're, 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 the long-term may not be likely. I mean, I, I would just guess that.
The, the caveat there is that if no development happens.
Right.
Right.
I just see that likely to be funded, it makes me go, likely?
Well, I think.
How about, yeah.
About maybe.
Carl, Carl took the likely to be funded, uh, from us as an option instead of saying constrained.
Okay.
Which all of us thought was very confusing.
Okay. Just trying to clarify that.
So it's a different term that means constrained.
Okay.
If that helps.
Somewhat likely to be funded.
Yeah, more likely than the other part of the list.
I, I think what, I think what Carl's saying is that, uh, there, there's a universe of money available if development happens. If no development happens, then there is no money there. But the, the projects that are not in that list of, uh, projects that fall under the constrained or the likely to be funded, uh, even if development happens.
Right.
They would have to find another source of funding for that.
And that caveat is what you just said, it's, uh, if, if development happens, he said it, but I didn't see it on here, so that's why I started.
And, and I, I do, as I recall, that's, that's actually built in into this document.
It's in the narrative.
It's in that one, but not this one.
We can only put so much into a label.
Okay.
And, and this, this chart that he's showing you is just one little segment out of the bigger document.
Right. Other questions, commissioners?
You say this whole, uh, project for funding is growth, uh, dependent.
The majority of it, in terms of where the money is generated, yeah.
I don't see the urban growth boundary for Oregon City to be really extreme to, to the point if it's built out, there'd be that kind of money generated.
Right.
And so the urban growth bounty for Oregon State is gonna either have to expand significantly, or there's gonna have to be other sources of funds. Because I, I just don't see Oregon City, the way the urban growth bounty currently exists, if we were to build out, that's gonna come up with 14 million dollars' worth of, uh, funds to, to improve our, our, our transportation system. Maybe I'm wrong, Tony, is, uh, what do you think? Am I off-base on that?
Hi, I have a moment to start. So the, to begin with, um, the forecasting that we do in terms of the land use forecast, it's all what's already within the urban growth bounty. We're not presuming a further extension or expansion of the urban growth bounty in our planning process. That's not the way this works.
So you think there's enough vacant land to generate?
Well, yes, that's part of the land use analysis, was that there is enough, again, assuming those, those places that are identified concept plans do get annexed and are authorized to move ahead at, at urban development levels. If that happens, those are within the urban growth boundaries. It's just a matter of, there is a deliberate step that needs to happen beyond that. But there are, there also is development potential infill and redevelopment types of potential outside of those and other places of the city. So that's not, I mean, the concept plan areas are not all the growth areas, there are other pieces. The reason I singled those out is because that's where the SDCs will be generated, it must be in those pockets.
Okay.
Hey, Carl?
So let's just, let's just say, for example, you took, I think off the top of my head, Beaver Creek had around 1,100 homes, Park Place was.
1,400.
1,400. You know, so that's, um, right now, our, our transportation system fee is a little over $7,000 per unit. That's 17.5 million in residential right there. So, you know, the assumptions were, were there based on the approved plans, and then that's what the model was built on.
And we didn't assume any changes to your current rates? Your SDC rates? One other thing that I, I hesitate to say, but if development were to stall in Oregon City because of annexation issues, right, and that doesn't continue to occur, but growth continues around the city, in county developments, City Malala, City Canby, traffic that uses Oregon City, uh, streets and transportation systems pretty regularly, that, that tends to, again, kind of create more problems for Oregon City that would go unfunded, because we would have no development. So the, the strategies kind of have, you know, of preventing development or not, um, can create other problems, because other communities are, are looking to grow.
I like the idea of tolling, John.
Toll roads now.
Yeah, on South End Road, and put your, put your quarter in as you go through.
As you enter the city.
Yeah, as you enter.
Pay here.
Pay here, yeah, yeah, I mean, you know.
Other questions?
Are we done?
I just, Carl. Carl, I just, I appreciate the fact that you doubly emphasize the fact that it's about safety. I think that, uh, for the record, I don't want to see anybody in Oregon City driving on the streets going anywhere quickly, because that doesn't benefit anybody. And so we're looking at safe and efficient transportation that gets people where they need to go, but in a reasonable and prudent manner. And so I'm, I appreciate the fact that you talked about the safety aspect, because it really is about safety.
Uh, just one other thing I wanted to maybe hear you expound on a little bit more is, I, I know I personally participated in some of the stakeholders' meetings, and there were other, uh, a number of other meetings that happened. Uh, my impression was that there was probably several dozen people that were participating in the development of this plan, in addition to public open houses and other activities.
Right, right.
Weren't you our planning commission representative?
I was.
Thank you.
So you're asking for?
I just wondered, may, maybe a, a brief, uh, description of how that process worked.
Well, I mean, we had the, the one slide that talked about, so, the, the update was developed in small pieces, so we, I think we had a total of 12 different memos that went out for circulation by the technical committee, which is, um, other agencies, other local agencies, Clackamas County, TriMet, Metro, ODOT, all those folks. They took one look at all those documents, the same with the stakeholders group, so that was, uh, local merchants, neighborhood representatives, those kinds of folks. They also looked at all the same documents and passed back to us either, uh, online or by email or in person at these meetings. So there was ample opportunity to give us feedback and direction as we went on, and usually that's the way we like to do the, we, as the consultant team, we want to hear from you, because ultimately, this is your plan. This isn't something we're gonna concoct up and live with, it's for you guys to live with. So we're very cognizant of that, that kind of feedback, and there's been, I would say for a city of this size, you've done well in terms of input. Like I said, it's hard to get energy excited about at DSP, it's difficult. Uh, but I think, uh, my assessment of, we're working on this for nearly two years, the city's done a good job.
Commissioner Kidwell, one thing, and maybe Bob can expand on this for me, but, um, the Transportation Advisory Committee spent a fair amount of this past year looking at the transportation system plan, looking at each one of those chapters, discussing them. We dedicated at least one meeting, maybe two, uh, to the transportation system plan. So that's the, that's the advisory body on, uh, that the city has for traffic issues. And at our last meeting, they, um, made a motion to, um, approve the draft transportation system plan, understanding that it's a kind of a document still in, um, some edit, editing, um, yet to have done. But they wanted to make that recommendation to the planning commission, and, um, I guess I'm, for the record, kind of sharing that with you now.
Thank you.
I second what he just said.
Okay. Thank you, Carl. Uh, so at this time, we will, uh, take public comment. If you wish to speak and you have not turned in a card, I would encourage you to do that at this time. And, uh, just a reminder, we will have a, a three-minute time limit for, uh, public and, uh, five minutes for, uh, representatives of, uh, neighborhood associations. Uh, the first person speaking tonight will be Christine Kuzinski.
Drink? We'll enter, um, these written documents into the record as well.
I have a couple things I'd like to.
Could you identify yourself, please?
Okay, Christine Kuzinski, out of and incorporated Clackamas County. I have a couple concerns I would like to address before I speak. First, tonight I heard you say that people who are represented by a neighborhood association may have five minutes to speak. Most of the people on Holly Lane, that number about 600 people, are not represented by a neighborhood association. Therefore, I feel that they should be given five minutes to speak. I could speak for the hamlet of Beaver Creek, but you don't recognize them either. It seems to me that a lot of the people on Holly Lane are not well represented.
Christine, where does it say that we don't recognize the hamlet of, of Beaver Creek?
I've been up here before.
I don't believe that's true.
In front of the city commission.
Well, we're not the city commission.
And they do not recognize the hamlet of Beaver Creek. They let me speak just once.
Is it not a CPO?
Yeah, CPOs are recognized.
It's not a CPO, a hamlet is different than a CPO. A hamlet is part of the county.
There is an area that represents their area, but they do not be involved.
I didn't know, I'm just confused.
I can certainly speak for the hamlet of Beaver Creek, um, next week if I can be given five minutes. I can tell you that my presentation tonight was very difficult. It took me 20 minutes, uh, or, I had a 20-minute presentation, I had to whittle it down to three minutes, and it's gonna be difficult for me to give you this very difficult information in just three minutes. So I'm concerned that a lot of things I say just don't get grasped.
Tony, I'm just curious, do, do organizations that are not, uh, a neighborhood representation have any standing in that regard? In, in terms of recognition outside of the city limits?
In terms of the hearing tonight?
Right.
It's, it's at the commission's discretion as to how they decide to run their meetings. We've identified neighborhood associations, um, that, that are spelled out. It, it's really at the discretion of the commission, how you would like to.
Does anyone have any objection to Christine's five minutes?
No.
You can have five minutes.
I, I would say as long as you summarize it, I, I appreciate the fact that you put this stuff together. I'm not gonna have time to read it tonight, but don't read the whole thing into the record, maybe.
Yes.
I was gonna tell you that I will give you parts. That's why I have highlighted the, uh, report from GRI, Geotechnical, so that later on you could read it in its entirety.
Very good.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Tonight I am providing each of you with the preliminary geotechnical evaluation for the Park Place Concept Plan, which is to include extending Holly Lane up the Holcomb Boulevard and building the Swan Road Extension. It is an important stu, it is important that you understand, um, the study if you are to evaluate whether Holly Lane and Swan Road Extensions can be safely built. On page two, under previous work, they speak of Bulletin 99 from Dogami, which explains studies performed in the vicinity of the concept plan study area. Dogami's report identified slopes of 10 to more than 50% within the study area, and further identified flooding along the Abernathy Creek and the potential high-water table near Ogden Middle School, where the city proposes to build the Swan Road Extension. On page three, the study identifies landslide topography in the Newell Creek Canyon and in canyons on both sides of Holly Lane. The study goes on to state that most of the landslides occurring on slopes of only 10 to 20%. On page four, first paragraph, the slopes at the creek crossings are typically steeper than 25%. If you want to extend Holly Lane, you are gonna go up 25% or greater. Holly Lane is explained as having steep grades with very narrow shoulders, a steep canyon to the east and steep slopes, greater than 25% along Holly between Redland and Donovan. Page four, third paragraph, development has occurred immediately outside the study area in the Oak Valley area. Evidence of soil creep is observed, including tilted and bowed trees around the perimeter slopes of the development. A home at 16376 Oak Valley Drive has already suffered serious landslide damages. This subdivision was built on the edge of a steep canyon and a huge landslide, only a short distance away from where the city proposes to extend Holly Lane up to Livsey. On page five, under conclusions and recommendations, the GRI report recommends that the city require a geotechnical evaluation as part of any future development in areas with slopes of 15% or steeper. Oregon City's regulations over steep slopes and landslides are found in Municipal Code 17.44. I question why Oregon City only regulates steep slopes of 25% or greater, when the recommendations in the preliminary geotechnical report are for slopes of only 15% or steeper. Landslides on Holly have been documented on as little as 10% slope, and additionally, the city of Salem, Portland, Marion, and Douglas Counties all require stricter regulations, with some on as little as slopes of 5 to 10%. Please note that the devastating landslides in the Street of Dreams off of Redland Road occurred on almost flat land, with only a gentle 5% slope. Because of the recommendations above to regulate slopes of 15% or greater, because of risk, because Holly, landslides are documented on only 10% slopes, because slopes from Holly to Holcomb are documented at 25% or greater, and because no decisions can be based on a preliminary geotechnical report, I am asking that the city undertake a full and complete geologic and geotechnical evaluation of the entire study area, including all areas for roadways, even if they are outside of the study area, and to include Thayer Road. I ask that this be done before any approvals are made, because you cannot possibly base your decisions on this preliminary report. I am enclosing for you an email that I sent to the, um, geotechnical engineer that did this report. There were many questions raised to the city on several occasions. Can you safely bring, um, Swan Road Extension over, um, the river and over the landslides? And so I have put this in here for you to see that her answer is no specific site studies were done. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person speaking this evening is Tom O'Brien.
Good evening, I'm Tom O'Brien, and I'm representing the Hazel Grove Westling Farms neighborhood. I'd like to begin by thanking staff and.
Excuse me, Tom, can you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, Tom O'Brien.
I'm sorry.
Hazel Grove Westling Farms Neighborhood Association. Uh, I'd like to thank Carl and the city staff for all of the work and effort they've put into this. Uh, I've had limited exposure to it up until recently. Uh, I did attend an open house, uh, probably six, eight months ago, held here in the city hall. And I'd be honest with you, in viewing the poster boards that were presented at that time, it was a little difficult to get an understanding of what was really going on. Uh, the size of it was such of small magnitude that you almost had to bring a magnifying glass with you, which I did not do. Laura was kind enough to come to our citizen involvement council meeting this month in March, and went through a slide presentation giving us a little bit greater input and overview of this process. At which point I, uh, asked a couple of questions, uh, at that time, but I have had an opportunity now to spend a couple of additional hours looking at the thing. What I've handed to you is a couple of documents taken from various aspects of this plan. Uh, the first one is page 39 out of Exhibit 1A. The first one is page 39 out of Exhibit 1A. That shows a overview map, which I then took, and because it was a PDF format online, if you look at the reverse of that, I've taken a specific area that is our neighborhood. Because we are a perimeter neighborhood, we have a considerable number of very new or fairly new homes. John Lewis provided me with information as to when system development charges first started taking place in the city, and as we all recognize, those system, as SDCs, are paid by the developer but are included and passed along to the homeowners upon purchase of the property. I would say in our particular neighborhood association, out of the 800-plus homes, roughly 85% to 90% of those have paid system development charges. The area where I have a red arrow pointing to a street extension of Westwood Drive from the south happens to be shown on the third page that I've given you, the map of Natural Resources Overlay District, a city park. Now, I'm a little bit concerned that we're going to be expanding a street into and developing properties in a city park. This is the same city park that I recently offered you some input in relative to water that's being considered to be placed on that property from an adjacent property on the other side of Hazel Nut Drive. I guess I'd like clarification on what's going on. Is this to be a city park? The Park and Recreation Advisory Committee seems to feel that it is. Their project for this year is to develop a master plan for that park, but yet this map shows that we're going to be putting a street in there. I don't think, as much work has been put into this, I don't think this plan is ready for prime time just yet. I, like I said, only spent a couple hours reviewing it, and naturally I was going to look at the things that affected our neighborhood immediately first, and therefore I bring this to your attention. The final page that I've given you there has a red arrow. I think there was some boilerplate that was used from perhaps a previous presentation. The reference there with the red arrow is referring to St. Helen's Transportation System Plan, and all of the information below, which it says will be addressed below, refers to Oregon City. So I think that correction would also need to be made. Relative to that park, we have been paying park SDCs, and there is no park in our neighborhood. We need that park.
Tom, I guess I'd address that, that particular one there. As I look at it, and I think I agree with you, I'm not quite sure why that's on there. So, I think it needs to be removed.
That was on there. There were a number of other things, but I can address those in emails to Laura or Christine or whomever. I just think that we haven't been as thorough as we need to be on this plan. I did see four or five other things, but I didn't want to take your time tonight to review them. I am a little disturbed with the outcome, Section 8. I didn't copy you on that. Exhibit 1A, Section 8 talks about our outcomes, and if the goal truly is to reduce the amount of time in peak hours for the freight traffic by 10%, and we are in fact increasing it another 14% above what it already is, I don't think we're coming anywhere close to meeting the goal. Even if we bury that in there a little bit and, you know, say, "Well, yeah, it would be even worse if we didn't," I'm sorry, that doesn't, that doesn't meet the goal. The other thing that I saw in there that I can't quite understand, and maybe somebody can get to me on it, is that in the area where it's talking about high-volume traffic areas that are coming up, are expected to be, there's a very short stretch on South End Road, south of Park Loop. Looks like it's a stretch of maybe a third of a mile at the most, that is in red, that is expected to be 500-plus additional transportation units in evening peak rush. How can you have a piece of land that--
Tom, we're going to explain that tonight in the workshop.
Okay. That I can't grasp, because South End Road is the whole problem issue right now with our South End Development Concept Plan. And, you know, to stick that one little short length in there. Thank you.
We asked that same question last week.
Yeah, we did.
Thanks.
Just point of clarification, Tony, does the public have an opportunity to offer written comments to the staff between now and when we actually take a vote on the plan?
The record will be, is continuously open until you'll close it, make a decision at some point, potentially a recommendation to the city commission, at which time it would be open again for both written and oral submittals.
And can people make those comments outside of this meeting in written form to city planning?
Yes, and then we would include it in the next packet as a written submittal, as an exhibit.
Okay, so if Tom or others that are here feel that they're constrained by the time element, they have an opportunity to offer testimony in writing to you about issues that they're concerned about?
Correct. Plus, yeah, correct. Write to us, and we will enter it into the record for the next public hearings, come to the next public hearing and speak again. So, those would be the two opportunities.
Okay.
So, the upcoming public hearing, people can also comment add?
Correct.
The next person speaking is Dan Fowler.
Dan Fowler, Oregon City. Good evening, Commission Chair and members of the commission and staff. Three quick comments, and we will also submit some of this in writing, but I just wanted to get it into the public via just speaking it. Overall, I think a very good job on the transportation plan, it's a very complex document, and a lot of time to get into it. Three things that I wanted to maybe throw out for consideration. One, there's a map, and I'm sorry I don't have the number, but I will, but it's a map that talks about the minimum parking standards in downtown district, and that that would qualify for a 50% or a certain percentage reduction. Currently, that map stops at 17th Street. I would like the commission to consider, that's the map, I would like the commission to consider that that extend to the Amtrak station. I think that may allow for some flexibility in parking standards, which might lead to a greater density of development in that area. That's number one. Number two, in the street design chart, Figure 12.04.130, street design, we're going to suggest that maybe just a note on that chart that would have something to do with if there was a couplet design, in other words, a split road design, that, or a one-way design of roads, that the standards are fine, the bike lane standards, the street with standards, the travel lane standards, all those are fine, but if it's split, that there would be those uses defined by those standards, and that would create the right-of-way width and the road width of the couplet. So, it's just a very minor thing. I think it could be done through some language. It doesn't mention a one-way or couplet. And the third item, and I think that this may be more of a question that I would have, is on the Table 12.04.198. It talks about the driveway spacings in that table, and it talks about in a minor arterial or major arterial, 175 feet in commercial areas. My question would be, if you needed a lesser standard on that, would a right-in, right-out apply versus just a driveway, where you could go left-out, right-out? That if the distance were a little shorter, would a right-in, right-out qualify for a smaller standard? So, and we can ask those questions and be happy to work with staff on those three things, but I just wanted to say them publicly.
Great.
Thank you very much.
Before you go, you mentioned one thing that was a little contradictory. You said, "Well, I know what a right-in, right-out is, but you can't have a left-in and a right-out." I mean, if you're trying to restrict access to make sure that people don't, you know, cross over a street, you're going to get them in one way, and then they're going to go out the other way. I don't think if you have a right-in, right-out, you can have a--
Right. A driveway, my point would be, a current driveway standard of 175-feet separation, you could have a current driveway that may involve a right-in, a right-out, or may involve a left-out.
The grocery outlet has a right-in, right-out.
Correct, yeah. If you were, if you wanted a shorter standard, so you would eliminate the left-out, could it be less than 175 feet?
Thank you. You're talking about reducing the standard?
Correct.
Right.
Could it be 150 feet?
You're saying that's the minimum, can you, or maybe that's the maximum?
The maximum could be less.
Is there a minimum?
As long as you didn't cross the traffic. So, it's just a, anyway. Okay? Thank you.
The next person speaking is William Gifford.
Commissioner Kidwell, I'm Commissioner, my name is William Gifford, and I live in Oregon City. I'll title these comments, the first half of my comments, about beyond the cut line. I think Carl did a good job emphasizing the fact that the proposed projects really are funded by growth. And personally, I'm bullish on Oregon City. And despite the fact that there are some anti-growth sentiments, I believe that we will grow, and I believe that we will grow smartly. What I, and Carl's comments also regarding the SDCs are not enough. He also made comments about deficiencies that could not be addressed by SDCs. I will throw out there that those deficiencies, however, there may be opportunities for some of those deficiencies to be, depending on their location, to be addressed by urban renewal. If there are true deficiencies within an urban renewal area, those could be addressed by urban renewal funding rather than by SDCs or any other funding. That's just something to be considering. But my major question is how, I talked about beyond the cut line, how future projects could be funded when we do find increased growth, when we do have additional tax revenue coming in through improved conditions yielding greater property taxes? My suspicion is we're going to be having more money available, and what I don't hear is a plan for, how do we fund those projects beyond what we have funded thus far? There's been a lot of talk about constraints, and a lot of talk about, you know, "We just don't have the money, we don't have the money, we don't have the money." But when we do have the money, how do we go back and revise this, and how do we prioritize those remaining projects? Those are my comments about beyond the cut line. Personally, comments that I have received from a number of citizens mostly are regarding the intersection at Molalla and Gaffney Lane, coming right out of Fred Meyer. I'm in the adjoining neighborhood association, and that's Gaffney Lane, but to me, that's a lot of congestion there, and I haven't seen on any plans. Was that intersection missed, or is it inconsequential, or is anybody addressing Molalla and Gaffney Lane? I think you all can picture the intersection. If anybody's been to Fred Meyer's, you know what a pain in the neck it is to get in and out of there.
Well, and we added the Molalla Boulevard project, so from Beaver Creek to 213. That's a project that we realized as we were pursuing grant funding that didn't show up, so we've asked DKS to add that project to the project list. So, that would include that intersection. Now, there are some constraints in that location--
Of course, always constraints.
--that, you know, can't be, in other words, there's not room for more lanes, put it that way, that location.
Well, I don't think anybody's looking for more lanes. I think they're just looking for a little more reasonably signalized intersection there. Personally, of course, you know, my preference for roundabouts, there are there a roundabout there, but just something to alleviate some of that traffic and the blocking up and the people trying to cut into Joanne's fabric coming the other way, they go across a double-yellow line to cut in there to get them back way into Burgerville, and it's just really not optimally designed.
Yeah, I would agree. Thanks.
Thank you. That is all of the cards I have. Are there any others? Can we go to the work session then?
We need to continue the meeting to the April 8th Planning Commission.
So, we need a motion to continue?
I'd like to move that we continue the public hearing to April the 8th, 2013, and keep the record open.
Second.
All right. Commissioner Guy.
Aye.
Commissioner McGriff.
Aye.
Commissioner Hankin.
Aye.
Commissioner Mahoney.
Aye.
Commissioner Kidwell.
Aye.
So, we will proceed with the work session regarding the transportation plan.
I'd like to request a three-minute break.
Absolutely. How about a five-minute break?
Okay, a five-minute break.
A big break.
Which one did you want them to bring in? All right, now we're on. Go ahead.
Maybe they have slides of it.
Oh, I think Kevin should come up.
Do you have on slides some of that that are out there?
The party's all here, Kevin, so--
Or do we need to pull those in?
I think so.
We have slides, but they're very fuzzy, so they're hard to read.
So, if we want to talk about--
Do you have any extra copies of these?
I have one with me, if anyone needs anyone. If you could borrow it, if you want to hand it back when you're done though.
And if there's one, I'm happy to take it. I mean, I bet by the time Carl's done with his presentation, I'm happy to be van away tonight.
I just want a map to show.
Which map did you want me to grab? Is there a specific map?
One that shows the Park Place area.
What type of map that was? Oh, but not a specific.
Tom?
It's in there, does everyone have one?
Yeah, we all have one.
The bigger map shows you what I want to talk about.
Okay. If anyone would like to borrow a copy for this meeting?
Yeah, well, I would suggest you be prepared to tell us what page it's on.
Does it?
Does it? All right, you're on.
So, here we are in the work session. What I've got is a shopping list of comments from past work sessions, and I'll try to roll through these. With me is Kevin Chewick, he's from my office. Kevin is the main author behind the TSP, and so if I don't know it, he definitely knows it. That's pretty much the rule on that one.
You've kept this guy under wraps until tonight.
Well, you know, he's been in the audience mostly. He had a little mechanical difficulty, so he's a little late tonight, but he's here in time for this, so that works well.
He got here when I got here.
What's that?
He got here when I got here.
Yeah, I've been sitting back in the audience.
Incognito.
Oh, yeah. Hiding out.
So, I tried to group these together, and you all may have more questions, because I was reading from notes that others prepared. So, the first item was funding mechanisms, and so I just came up with a list of funding mechanisms, and I wasn't sure if there was more behind that in terms of, or if we've already covered that in the prior discussion, about what the different mechanisms that are out there. But the basic ones that are at your disposal are the exactions that come through development review. You can actually ask them to construct something at the time of development approval. The SDC that we talked about, the city staff can pursue grants, and the city commission obviously has discretion to take funds elsewhere and put it into transportation if they want to. They historically have not, but they certainly could do that. We already changed the labels from likely to likely unfunded and funded, even though that's kind of the middle of the road, and I think you understand the meeting better now than where we were at before. The next category was about speeding. There was a lot of discussion last time I was here about speeding, and there was to talk about what you really can do about it. Tony talked a little bit about the enforcement aspect of that. There are other aspects that are actually incorporated in the plan of the design piece. That's one of the reasons we have what we call the multimodal street design standards, is you have flexibility in terms of what the street crossing looks like, depending on what the fronting land use is. But that really only applies if you're going to build a new street or if you're going to retrofit an existing street. It doesn't take care of your built streets and neighborhoods that are fully developed. Those are kind of-- Those are, those are kind of different category. The basic premise with speeding is it is, it is the, how you influence the expectation of the driver. So if you make the, the travel way look narrower, they'll drive slower. That's just the simple dynamic of it.
Some people.
Most people. We don't shoot for everybody. We never designed for everybody. We designed for most people. And so a number of ways to do that, landscaping, curb extensions, gravel combing, narrower lanes. You can see in the street design centers, there's actually opportunity to narrow the travel lanes and the turn lanes and those kinds of things. But if you're not doing that, then you have to deal with operational types of issues. You can allow on-street parking where you otherwise maybe weren't. I believe the city already has these speed feedback signs. And John's not here. You not have, you have a few?
Not enough.
You have a few, oh, right. Okay. So those can be effective. Other cities, I don't think any in Clackamas do photo radar, but I know there's some cities on the west side that do that.
Milwaukee.
Really? Milwaukee does photo radar?
They have a van.
Okay. Yeah, we, yeah.
I, I want you to know, I do not know that from personal experience, but I have seen it many, many times as I've rolled down McLaughlin at 30 miles an hour, which is the speed limit. That's how I know.
Ah, okay.
You know, I, I, I used to think that those were just a gimmick, those, the feedback signs.
Oh, those, yeah.
I just thought that was a gimmick, but I, I used to live right off of Pease Road and people were just whizzing down that road. I thought, you know, it's like a drag strip. It's unbelievable. And they put that sign out there and it was, it was visibly different. You could see people, they would turn the corner from Leland Road and you could kind of hear the engine revving up and they'd get about 50 yards down the road and they'd see that sign and they would back off. It was unbelievable, the effect of that sign.
They do have an impact. They're, they are an investment, you know, it's not, you can't put those as much as you'd like. I mean, I, yeah, my dream with cars in the future, and maybe I'll have to get there, but, well, the, yeah, the speed zones would talk to the cars and the cars would talk to the speed zone, so it would be obvious. I mean, the technology's there, they just need to go put it in place, right? It's not like a big, that's the, the problem with most drivers is they don't ever look down at their dash, their control panel. They have no idea what speed they're going. They're going what's comfortable based on what they see through the windshield. That's the, so that's what kind of world we have to work with. So in terms of enforcement, I mean, there's, there's certainly options to do that. Most cities are at the point now, they have very limited resources. Frankly, most, you know, a lot of cities I know don't have really any enforcement active on a regular recurring basis. I tend to think enforcement is kind of your last option because it's so, from the investment, for what you're getting for it, it's a pretty steep investment, you know? There's, there's, there's other ways to go about that. But Tony's already talked about that a little bit. Unless you have anything new to add tonight, Tony? So truck routes, there was a comment about, who am I, I don't have the map, but you know the one. It's Beaver Creek and then Warner Milne and, I think that's it, yeah, yeah. Beaver Creek, Warner, there's a little loop. You know, normally our, our practice for showing local truck routes was to service industrial areas. In that case, that, the actual area is not zoned industrial, it's a zone, I think, Kevin, you said mixed use.
Mixes and plenty.
So it, we went right by it thinking that would be okay. The, the reason you do a truck route designation on a local TSP like this is to give you a little more flexibility in what the street design standard is. If you look at the table, at least in the TSP, I'm not sure exactly where it is in the code, you can actually make the travel lanes a little bit wider when you have a high amount of truck traffic and those kinds of things. I mean, really, that's the only difference in that designation for a local TSP. The region and the state have their own truck route designations and those are true through routes. They don't, they don't put those on the map for anywhere that's a local delivery. It's basically, you know, 99, I-5, 205, and anything that goes through the city is what they might designate. So if you just, if you prefer, we can show that on the city plan, that, that little area around the state way, basically, is a truck route, that would be fine. So we talked a little bit about label colors. Should they be red? Should they be white? Should they be green? And at first, we thought there was a personal preference about changing that and then we thought about it a little bit more and were a little cautious. Well, one thing, the coloration was picked so that it was high contrast, highly visible because if you look at those system plan maps, there's a lot going on, on there. And so what we were shooting for was something that was high contrast, easy to see, thinking that the red would actually be more apparent than the white and the red being the ones that can be funded. It just happens to be a little counterintuitive in terms of what the way you think of red to green. The other caution was if we go to red and green, those are two colors that aren't very easily differentiated by colorblind people. They basically look the same. So that's kind of how we got where we were, was red and white. If, if you don't have a strong feeling about that, I think I'd probably prefer to leave it the way it is, but if you guys feel differently, we can, we're open to making changes.
Well, my only comment about red is that when people see red, it means stop or caution.
Yeah.
I don't think red means go.
Right, right, or, right, or funded, or that kind of thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, fair enough, fair comment.
It kind of means look out, something's going on here.
Well, something going on here, the fact that this project might get built, might get built is kind of what we're trying to say.
Well, yeah, but then it might, and then again, it might not.
I think that comment about the color was specifically talking about those designations for the projects, not all the lines on the drawing, but just.
The labels?
Just the designation of each project.
Okay.
Because it, it seemed counterintuitive to us to say that the red projects were the ones that were a go and the green projects were not a go.
Not a go, yeah. It's kind of reversed intuitively.
Okay. All right, well, we'll think about that. I don't know, Laura, do you have something?
Would you like us to change the labels from red and white or?
I think the colors work, they're really sharp.
Yeah, we wanted the, for the black and, if it's colored in black and white, then you could see it a little bit easier and then that color brown.
Yeah, I think the, the quality of the printed maps, you know, the, these, these printed maps, they're, they're pretty good quality printed maps. The, the only places where I have a little trouble distinguishing is when you have a yellow background and you have blue dashed lines and green dashed lines, they, in my eye, they're a little hard to distinguish which is blue and which is green, but if I look hard enough, I can see that.
Okay.
Other than that, I think the, the maps are real well done.
Okay.
Saying leave as is?
Is there a consensus about the blue or the green or the red on proposed projects?
I think it's more particular about color because we're seeing it, the commissioners are seeing it, but color, it's a little bit, have a lot of difference.
Right. I mean, it's, it's, you know, in the end, we're, this is getting a lot of attention now, but it is a document you're going to look at periodically, you know? It's not, it's not a regular reference.
And we can update the colors every year.
Well, well, to be honest, I mean, once, once we get done, there's, there's GIS data that'll all this be ported over to the city's GIS system and they can color it purple and green for all I care, frankly, but we're just trying to deal with the printed version, which is kind of a challenge given all this going on.
Right.
Who are we concerned with seeing then, the colors? Just us or?
No, but everybody, the public.
Well, it's mainly the public because these are documents intended for public consumption.
Consumption, yeah.
So it, it was just, and I don't think it's a make or break deal, but we had a conversation last week when you were here, that the, the idea that the projects that were anticipated, that they were going to go forward at some point, were identified as red and the ones that didn't have funding were green.
Were green.
If we were to change that label from the financially constrained to likely to be funded, that would solve that problem?
Yeah, that, that was part of that, same discussion.
Yeah, that was part of that discussion.
Add some clarity.
All right. Uh, okay. So next on my shopping list is figure 20. There was a comment that it was a counterintuitive, the line was going a different way than the labeling, so we'll fix that. Come up with different labels, I think the line's still going to go the same way, personally. So land use forecast, I think, I touched on this a little bit during the previous part of the session. So land use forecast, now, Planning Commission, I think, is probably fairly informed about how this, but I'll, I'll go through it anyway about how we do land use forecast. So we.
Carl, before you go ahead, I, I think one of the people that was commenting actually had the same, I can't remember who it was that said it, it might have been Tom O'Brien, but one of the people that was speaking tonight actually had a comment about that figure 20, that he was, and, and his concern was specifically that the, the trend indicated that there was going to be less safety over time.
That 20 was in a weird place because we couldn't find it at first.
Yeah, well, he was talking about freight delay is what he was talking about. It wasn't figure 20, it was a different one, but he said we didn't, we didn't, we didn't meet the target.
Right.
And that's true. The region doesn't meet the target and so you're kind of a mirror of the region on that one. I mean, again, and, and the regional transportation view of it, that's an area, that's an area they'd like to make improvement, but the fact of the matter is, investments that they're able to put toward transportation system really isn't making a dent in that problem. I mean, that's the reality of it. So I'm, I'm okay as long as, you know, Oregon City's consistent with the region on that particular measuring, a needle on the gauge, needle on the dashboard. But yeah, we'll correct the figure 20, which is the one that was talking about safety.
Mm-hmm.
Because it looks like safety's going down and it really is going the other way.
Yeah, that's what we were confused about.
Yes, fair enough, fair enough. So land use forecasting, again, you play within the UGB, you don't speculate on what may or may not happen outside the UGB. You go with what your zoning currently allows, you don't speculate on what it could become someday if. For residential types uses, for example, we take, pick the average, kind of the midpoint of the range, the allowable range and densities. And then there is some work that's done really at a regional scale where they look at, you know, kind of the greater balance of jobs and housing across the region. They basically say, you know, Oregon City, you can, you can carry this much housing growth in the planning period and this much job growth in the planning period based on your land uses and where you are relative to other cities in the region. So it actually does, it's kind of a, a macro version of what we're doing for the city where they actually look at the cost of commuting from Oregon City to all other points in the region and they talk about how likely people who choose to live here would work in those other areas in the reverse. So that all gets sorted out at a regional level and then the city gets to sort that out at more of a fine-grained level where exactly that's going to happen within the city, basically. Does that make sense? Okay, I thought you guys were all on board on that. So the last time I was here, we talked about alternate connections to South End Road via, I think it was Butel Road extension.
Well, we didn't, but.
I know, yeah, there was an advocate for that and that advocate will continue to advocate regardless of what the TSP says, I think, but.
Yes.
We are, we are showing a connection, but it's a trail connection, not a road connection. Even the trail connection is, is not fully embraced by certain staff at Metro. I mean, they'd rather just leave it as a natural habitat, frankly. That's kind of their position.
Instead of having incursions in the.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But, but we think it's worth investigating and, and our point of view is it's not, it's not so much a matter of what alignment it takes, whether it, you know, diagonally goes through that area or not, if it runs along the top and does something different, but having some sort of connection through there would be a useful connection to have. And so that's why we continue to show that in the plan.
Figure 19, where it's shared walking and biking solutions?
I believe that's.
There's a red dot at, at 99.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yeah, S-34 is the line. And the line, the, the way the line moves is kind of irrelevant, but the fact that you're connecting the bluff down to the highway, they could choose to go a different path and avoid, you know, habitat and natural problems that you would uncover as you go through there. Let's see, this is the one that I think I probably got completely wrong. There was a discussion about the trade-offs between these different kinds of benefits. Laura, does this look familiar? Because I got these from your notes. It does look familiar. Excellent. So let me say the obvious, I'll, I'll just mention that when we go through the different choices about solution, there's, there's always kind of a tension between some of these different categories of benefits. You know, for example, if you do just the first, if you, if you're, if you're, if you're designing a plan around reducing delay, you get less interruption, you get bigger streets, you get less interruptions from driving around at the cost of the other parts of the system. That's why this time around, we did a more deliberate process of actually coming up with metrics for some of these other kinds of measures so that you had a more balanced system in the end. That's why you had, at least in terms of the project count, you had far more bike and walking and transit and, you know, neighborhood, what are they called? Family-friendly routes, that kind of thing, than in your prior plan because we took that different approach. So in terms of economic development, you know, partly it's congestion, but partly it's the other, these other factors that I mentioned here. Obviously, the city needs to be, you know, developers, they're making an investment, so they're looking for clear requirements, what's going to be asked of them, you know, are they, do, does your city have competitive costs compared to the next few cities over? But without strong market conditions, none of that's going to happen, you know, if the demand's not there. So that's, that's something that's kind of outside the purview of the TSP, we can't dictate, dictate that. But in terms of livability and multimodal, those are somewhat similar. Safety, convenience, access for all, those are, those are pieces of the puzzle that I don't think were discreetly addressed in the prior plan, that we try to do so more this time around. And the last two, I think, I think from my point of view, it comes down to making the best use of the space that you have. And so you want to make the streets as narrow as you can in terms of the travel way and make space available for other uses. If you do front retail uses, then maybe you allow on-street parking and maybe you will allow wider sidewalks or landscaping or some other kind of amenities there. Parking regulations, I mean, there's a lot of, lot of energy around parking requirements, that's for sure. But if you zoom out far enough, it's basically the notion of best use of space, especially in a downtown or mixed use area. There's lots of other more interesting things you can do with a half an acre of land than put a parking lot on it, you know? So that's, I don't know if that's what you're looking for, if I completely missed the boat. If I missed the boat, bring it up now and we'll talk about something different.
I just wish there's, that there would be some consideration of the, the automated parking that stacks your car in a slot. I mean, they had them years ago in downtown, I mean, I never saw them, but I understand that they had them in downtown Portland and they were, they were pretty awesome. So they were really ahead of their time, but they were, they were taken out, but I mean.
The oil only dripped on my car once from one of those above me.
Yeah. Well, I mean, it takes up so much less space and it's, it's so much more efficient and they're using them quite a bit in Europe.
Is that one of the, the 19-year-old driving a forklift?
No, no, it's not the 19-year-old using a forklift.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I've seen those. They're, they're out there.
They're pretty cool.
Yeah. Let's see, I guess that's all I had in terms of my list. So I, I don't know what other question you commissioners had that have not been addressed one way or the other, or they're still out there. I know there was some raised tonight.
Well, I had a, I had a question that somebody was going to get back to me on about the right of this very specific right-of-way width of Holly Lane. And we were, he was guessing what it was on the, the map, but I don't know if you followed up on that? John?
Uh, no.
He did.
Well, yeah, we went through that. I wasn't guessing.
Yeah, but you, you said it was a guesstimate. You thought it was about 50, but, you know, we took 50 as the.
Well, that's because from one end, it was, from one end to the other, Holly Lane, some places it was 50, some places it was 40. So that's why I was, that's why I was soft on that. But it varies depending on proximity. So I, I didn't realize I needed to clarify that.
It was 40, abutting, the people who made the comment, their property, which is outside[1725.33]
the city limits and outside our UGB, their right-of-way width was 40.
Yeah, it'd be interesting to see what it is all the way, the part that's in the UGB all the way down, just because, you know, if it comes up again, we will be prepared.
I have comments about that area, but I don't know if there's something that you can address, so I've been saving that for later. Or is this the time? That's why I needed the map, but I don't think that that's something that they can control.
If, if you've got a question, I'd say this is the time to ask.
Well, it's not a question of them necessarily.
Well, she's getting it, but I'll ask my question while you're waiting. So, we, we had talked very briefly about the fact that the county is going through a transportation system, a system plan as well.
Right.
And how far along are they vis-à-vis what we're doing, and how much do our, I guess I would like to be optimistic and say, how much do our plans actually dovetail with one another? Because they probably--
I think John can speak to that.
They probably shouldn't be inconsistent.
Yeah, I can speak to that specifically for Holly Lane, I looked at that today, actually. Holly Lane, they're showing wider shoulders, is all they kind of refer to, and what they explained to me was, they thought that they were looking for something more like a six-foot paved wider shoulder with gravel shoulders as well. And that was, that was a general statement specific to Holly Lane. I'm not sure if there's points along that alignment that would constrain that or allow for more, I'm not sure, but, you know, these are, again, these are, these aren't project detailed--
No.
Designs, they're, you know, they're 10,000-foot level--
Yeah, but I mean, parts of Holly Lane are kind of scary. I don't know where they get the extra footage to put a gravel shoulder.
Well, but, I mean, that's just, if you're looking for safety--
Yeah.
That's what they're talking about, and they, you know, a lot of this is trying to get, you know, bike lanes. So, the, when, when we, the challenge or the conflict that I see is that the county is not necessarily considering the city projects as projects that they would, for me, it's a funding issue. I mean, they're, I think we're doing a good job planning, and they're planning for things inside the city, I mean, inside, outside the city, and we're planning for things inside the city. Holly Lane is, I think, about the only exception to that.
Yeah.
And I think that's because it's such an important piece to, you know, just development potential on either end of Holly Lane. So, I, I would say, the other thing is, the county is further behind than we are, they're not moving through the legislative process, but they're talking about finalizing their lists, and you can go online now and look at their project list, and in detail, they've got project maps, just like we've got project maps. They show projects coming right up to the city limits and then stopping there, for instance, along Beaver Creek Road. Again, they're should, they're talking about more, you know, wider shoulders. They do show Beaver Creek and 213 as a, as a project, but it's an unfunded project, so that's one of the few. I think they also show 205 and 99E, they show a couple of projects there. And so, I'm not quite sure where they're drawing the line, other than they're calling those state highway projects, not county projects. So, there's all, there's a county list, and then there's a state list. I don't think there's a lot of duplication in the two points, but I think it's a good effort.
Well, I think it would be helpful to have their project manager come and do a presentation to us at some point in time in the next couple of months, because I think it's really critical, at least in those areas where we have, where we butt up against each other and where there might be some overlap, that it would be good to be informed.
Okay.
You know--
I think we can ask that.
One of the things that occurred to me, because I didn't have the previous plan to look at for reference, there's been questions, both for South End and the Holly Lane area, about some of the proposed roads, and what I was curious about is, are the proposed roads connecting between Holly Lane and--
Holcomb.
To Holcomb Boulevard? Is that from the previous plan, or is that new to this plan?
No, it's part of the Park Place Concept Plan.
It's new to this plan.
Oh, to this plan, okay.
All roads from the concept plans were integrated into our TSP.
Okay, so it was from the Park Place Concept Plan, but not the previous TSP?
Right, because the TSP was adopted before the urban growth boundary expansion areas.
Same is true for the Beaver Creek.
Okay.
And the, the Park Place Concept Plan included transportation plans and sanitary plans and water plans that were all adopted as ancillary documents to your existing comprehensive plan.
Okay.
So, essentially, they were updated to include those projects when you, when the Park Place Concept Plan was adopted.
So, I guess my, my question really goes to, when those plans were developed, was there any feasibility plan hand-in-hand with that to determine whether or not the line on the drawing is realistic to actually build?
Nope.
I don't think, I doubt it. It wasn't site-specific.
Well, and that's, you get, it's a really good question, because when you do these TSPs, even the concept plan, you're planning at the 10,000-foot level, and you're doing, you know, some analysis, but you, yeah, you can never get down to a site analysis, is this exact orientation correct, or we done all, you know, can we say definitively that this, this road will cost this amount of money, and we have, you know, identified it? So, you do the best you can based on not doing site-specific analysis of project and drawings. So, you know, once you have a line on a map, as an application process goes forward, that's when you start to do the site-specific analysis, and maybe addressing some of Ms. Kozinski's comments, some of the transportation, and, you know, at that point, through the development application, the road may be built and designed exactly as the TSP has it, or based on more information at the time, it may be slightly modified, and you make your findings on why this modified road still meets the goals and policies of the TSP, but it's at the time of the development application that you get into the weeds of that analysis, because you can't do that at this level for all the roads.
I fundamentally agree with what you said, but part of the problem with an area like that is that you cannot do it piecemeal. It has to be done on a broader scope, because, you know, I have to say that, you know, the folks back in the pioneer days, I'm sure there was a reason why they never built there, because they probably had a little more common sense than we do with all of our technology. But I mean, I think the problem is, is that knowing the public, like all of us do, working in the public sector, people see something on a map, and they think it's cast in stone. And I'm just projecting, so let's say we do some studies, and we find out, hey, we really can't put any roadway through there, but somebody comes up and says, but, it's on the map, there's a line on the map. And there's got to be some way that that can be taken into account. I'm not saying that that will happen, but I'm just saying, well, what's the other extreme? That it's not buildable, and we've got this line, and people get, I mean, they go right down to the tunnel vision, you know, ooh, that line is right by my house, you know, I mean, you've heard it many times, as have I, and that's where they go.
Well, I mean--
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, I, I think we're both talking to them, and we all agree, and I think the key, key point to what Mr. Conklin said is, these plans have been adopted by the city commission ordinance, they are further implemented through this, and this really isn't a, I mean, you have to, we have to revisit the Park Place Concept Plan in order to really get to some of these questions, I think, that are coming out. And that's not really the purview of this process, but, you know, I, there, I don't know how to, how to say anything differently than, if you have an asterisk on a map that say, you know, due to site constraints, you know, the final location would be based on development application, or not have that asterisk, that's still the case for every single project, no matter if it's, you know, has constraints or is on a flat area. You get the final design at the time of development application.
One thing I always like to add, when I hear these complaints or concerns, my sense is, at some point, somebody said Redland Road could never be built, South End Road could never be built. Yet they're, they're there, and, you know, design engineering went into those, and, you know, I think at some point in time, if the development community is hungry enough for those projects to go through, they, they will come through. And with the engineering practices that we have now, hopefully, they'll be built even better. But, again, it's fun--
Sorry.
Funding is, you know, 213 could probably, I mean, a lot of people would have argued it should have never been built.
That's--
I've been sitting here biting my tongue.
It's probably, it's probably very true, it probably shouldn't have been.
Have you chewed it off yet?
Just about.
Yeah, go, Tom.
Well, and really, my, my question was more so, what was the history that got that line on there?
I'll tell you.
That's what it was.
That was my question, is how the line got there in the first place.
I'll tell you. I sat through every single one of the Park Place Concept Plan meetings, the pre-meetings, that during the meetings, as many as Christine sat, and I, we all argued back and forth about different things. And actually, there was a lot of people who worked on the concept plan, who were part of that, who still disagreed, and they've been leading the vote against annexation in that area, primarily because of that road and a lot of those areas up there. That road comes behind homeowners association of 43 homes, and that's why I was pulling in that map. Actually, because somebody owns--
You really, you really need to be at the mic so that we can record.
Okay, well, can I show anybody?
We can get you a pointer.
Get him a hand, Hillary.
The 12u neighborhood, that third, the back property that's over in the corner, another individual owns the property on the corner. This is the corner of Trailview right here. That roadway can only go right through a narrow, and I'm not sure if they know it, 40, I think 40 feet or 50 feet, right there, because this person here owns all this property and refuses to give it up. So, this roadway is going to come right there behind somebody's home who has three children and several other people. That's the only area they can get the road through.
You're assuming current ownership.
Current ownership, but still, it's right behind someone's home. You've got a street in front of them and then a roadway behind them, so that's not a lot of privacy.
See, I don't think that this plan is necessarily looking at--
Oh, I know, not that.
The current ownership of any property.
No.
I understand that, so let me, let me continue here.
I mean, in theory, what you're suggesting is saying that that property will always be held by somebody that--
With the children, but still, no matter who lives there, there's going to be a road behind them and a street in front of them, because that's the only area that they can get the road through.
See, that's, that's my point.
Maybe.
It could be 150 feet farther away--
He won't give the property out.
See, that's what I'm saying.
We're talking maybe.
You're assuming current ownership, you can't do that with a line like this.
You don't know Rich Conlee.
I hate to say this, but--
Well, he could do a lot of things, he could put a deed restriction on his property, but whatever, so--
Okay, so what I'm, where I'm trying to lead with this, is the road was coming up here, the last time they had an annexation, they were going to open the roads right through here, there was only one way in, it was Winston Drive, and that was going to bring all the construction traffic down here to the, this road abutment here, and there was another one over here. So, all these neighbors, along with the HOA, even donated money to block that annexation as long as, as well as people on Holly Lane, because they didn't want all this construction traffic in that subdivision there, but also, they didn't want the road up there. But my concern isn't that right now, I just addressed what you were talking about. I went through here today, and I started reading more and more, and said, on page 23, "Other roadways that are expected to experience average travel speeds while below the posted limits during the evening include Beaver Creek Road, Maple Lane Road, Redland Road, and Washington Street." That's on page 23, down in the corner. So, then I, I started looking at some of the other planned items here, and the one thing I've been saying for 10 years, can you kind of pull it out? For 10 years, I've been pointing out, Ken Ziegler, every time he came before us and talked about having this annexation, is they kept talking about how this area was flooding here around Abernathy Creek, and that they needed another way so that people coming in Redland could go up here to Holcomb to come back around and to, so they can get out of this area here. That was one of the big excuses that was used constantly, we need another road here in order for people to get up here and bypass the flooding that occurs in this area. And I was, I was showing you earlier, I bought my dad's book, he worked for the Corps of Engineers, and he was here during the flooding of '64, and he helped with the earthquake up in Alaska and reconstruct roads, and if he was here right today, he'd probably say, well, why don't they raise Redland Road? And every time I've proposed that over the last 10 years, that you need to improve Redland before you start building this out, is they say there's not enough money to improve Redland Road, or it's a county road, but so is Holcomb, and Holcomb got improvements over the last few years. But if they don't raise this road in Redland, and that's key to the transportation, right there in the opening, they say it's going to be a slow area in evening traffic, and that's because, any time of year, but when you have flooding, you can't get through here, and so that's where all these people are concerned, they go out to Bradley Road and come all the way around. So, that's part of my key objection to the transportation plan right now, is it addresses street extensions and everything else, but it does not talk about Redland Road, which is a key road for people in and out of Oregon City. And if they can't improve that, and I didn't see it anywhere in the plan, then that's going to block a lot of people, you're going to bring all these homes, 1,400 homes, and if that area floods, how are these people going to get in and out? It's all going to come up on Holcomb Boulevard if that roadway there is not on the transportation plan to be improved.
Well, maybe--
I think the county's plan lists Redland Road.
Flood lanes.
So, Tom, let's--
Sorry.
Let, John--
My recollection is correct, Redland Road is one of those projects, again, long-term, shown for improvements. I don't remember the specific details of that, but Redland Road is also on their, on their improvement list.
Is it?
Just like, just like Forsyth and Clackamas River Tribe, they're, you know, those are projects that they've listed.
Landslide's there all the time.
So, yeah.
I know.
Well, I was looking back at, at some of the comments that were made tonight, and I agree with Christine about the, the slides, because we watched Oak Tree Terrace, some of the slides of homes and their backside of the property there. I was driving by, taking pictures as I went up Holcomb during that time period.
That was, that was poor Phil.
Was it?
That was not--
But I do know that--
That was not a, that was poor Phil.
Because I know I have been the MC of the earthquake ones and the slide areas that we had here in the city, and that whole area was pointed out to be that. I agree with Dan Fowler that this whole program looks great, I mean, there's a, overall, it looks perfect, but I disagree with things like William Gifford, who said, "He's bullish in growth, and there's some who aren't." It's not that they're anti-growth, they just, the Citizens for Responsible Growth just want something that's responsibly done, and they're not against growth, they just want it done responsibly with the right kind of roads in there that will not create more traffic at Redland and Holcomb and Abernathy.
John, what's your knowledge about Redland Road improvements? Where's that fall into the scheme of things?
At my recollection, it was an, it was one of, on their list, it was one of their unfunded projects. So, I think they do theirs in tiers, so tier one, two, and three, and it was in tier three. If we, well, I'll run and grab that real quick.
And they may do it in tiers too, because they don't have any money, so they're trying.
But it's so pretty good, so pretty good, that area for--
There is a project in your plan for Redland Road, upgrade the standards.
Pardon?
In the TSP before you, there's a project--
I didn't see it in--
Do you have a number for that?
And I went through, I even wrote down some of the numbers.
Look at figure 16, Project D-91.
Figure 16. What page is that?
Well, go in alphabetical order, I mean, in numerical order, there's a, there's a figure.
It's right after figure 15.
Right past 61.
He doesn't know where that is.
Go past page 61.
Okay, I got 16.
You can find out more about it on page 17 of your--
Land Street and Intersection Expansion.
Which is on the--
Because I looked through the list of projects, and I didn't see it there, I saw lighting, it said, could, not likely to be funded, but I didn't see anything about raising the height of the road.
It says, it says upgrade the urban standards, it doesn't specifically call out raising the height of the road.
It's bingo.
If you upgrade it to urban standards, you're going to actually put storm drains in, right?
So, Tom--
Sorry.
It's on page 17.
Of the chart.
Of this chart.
So, while we're talking about the chart, what does funded driving solutions mean? It's, it's right under the project number?
What page are you talking about?
Okay, are you talking about on here, the Redland Road sidewalk infill?
No, it's D--
91, right.
If you look on your map on figure 16--
You said it's on page 17?
Yeah, on that.
Figure 16.
He's talking about page 17, but look at the map.
I'm on 16.
He's on 16.
D-91. Okay, there's D-91, and then you look on this chart, you've got--
Redland Road upgrade. Holcomb Boulevard to Holly Lane, improve to minor arterial cross-sections as constrained street.
But nothing about addressing the flooding of that area, the fact that Redland needs to be raised up. They're talking only about Holcomb Boulevard to Holly Lane, not about actually the whole, anybody who's been down that street, or road, knows that Redland floods when we get heavy rains, and that's not addressed in here, the flooding area.
And the county let somebody build a house in there too.
I know. And it floods every year, and that was what Ken Ziegler and several people kept saying.
Is that outside of the city limit there?
Where's the city limits in?
Livsey and Redland are in the city, but I don't know about the rest of it.
But that's key to putting fourteen-hundred homes and twenty-eight-hundred cars in there, having that roadway improved.
Well, that's one of those chicken and egg problems.
It is.
I know.
If you don't allow annexation, then it can't be within the-
It's just been one of my pet peeves for years, ten years!
But see, they can't put an improvement in an area that's outside of the-
But they've been trying to annex that whole area into the Park Place area, and that's why people kept voting it down. And Holly Lane's been pushing against it. Our area's been pushing against it because of the fact that it would put all that traffic on Holcomb if they don't improve Redland first.
We're talking about a once-a-decade event that causes issues because we don't have connectivity.
But if you listen to Ken, it was almost every two or three years.
Well, we-
Sorry.
We can talk about a lot of hearsay, but we're trying to deal with what the reality of the situation is, is once again, it goes back to, what are you trying to accomplish with your transportation system plan with the amount of funds that you have available to you? Part of a healthy and transportation system is connectivity and safe routes. And while flooding is an issue, it's kind of like congestion, you know? Eighteen hours a day, you have more capacity than you need. For six hours, you have an issue. And so how much money do you put in?
There's a lot of anecdotal information out there, but when you actually measure it out, and I think Carl made a good point, do you design the street for that one or two hours a day that you've got a congestion problem? Or do you figure out alternatives to lessen the problem, but design it for the twenty-four-hour period? And that's kind of what we're talking about when it comes to flooding. If we have flooding every twenty or thirty years in the spot.
It's more often than that out there.
Well, I don't know.
Yeah, it is. My in-laws live out that way.
The point is that I went to page twenty-three, and it says, "Well below the posted limits during the evening includes those roads, Redland Road." And we already, those who live, like Tom lives in his area, those who live in South End, we live out in Park Place, and we know the constraints of that intersection at Abernathy and Redland Road and Holcomb. All three come together there. And there's one turn lane, but it's only two lanes all the way out. And in the morning, when people are trying to get to work, and when they come home at night, that is so congested, and especially, I use the flooding as one example, but it still is so congested in that area. And if they ever plan to put fourteen-hundred homes there, that road has to be widened or something has to happen, because it's going to put a big mess in that area. And to me, if they're planning this out as out to two thousand and thirty-five, we need to start thinking about, what are we going to do about Redland Road if we have that many homes planned out there?
Well, let me take the contrary view. If people want to live in the country-
Well, that's why they move there, but now they're going to get a road and fourteen-hundred homes.
And then they want to be able to commute into an urban area, then they have, I think that that's an expectation that they need to have a reality check about, because nobody said that it was going to be smooth sailing from out on Redland Road into Oregon City on two thirteen, and that is a choice that they made. And if there's congestion, let me just take the devil's advocate view, it's too darn bad. I don't want to see us spend money to widen roads just so somebody can get to work faster.
Or get home.
Or get home faster. That, you know, they made that choice about where they wanted to live, and they had, and I think people's expectations that cities are going to accommodate people who live outside the city and make everything swell for them is ridiculous.
I understand that, but when you put fourteen-hundred homes in there that weren't planned in a very steep environment, and you want all those fourteen-hundred homes to be able to-
I don't think there's going to be fourteen-hundred homes.
But that's the plan of the Park Place.
I understand that, but that may not be reality. And I think one of the things we have to recognize on a high level is that Oregon City needs to learn from its mistakes. We have buildings in places and roads in places that probably should never have been there that we'd- Not that the county did, we did it. And we need to look at these things to make sure that we're not making the same mistakes over and over again.
Agreed.
I mean, it's just, it's throwing, you know, good money down the rat hole, and we do not have a lot of money.
So that goes to my other connected question to this whole thing, is that when the time comes that there is a demand for that road somewhere? And, yeah, it's a line on a piece of paper. Is it fair to assume at that point in time that engineering and feasibility studies are required before that road gets to be built?
That's correct.
That's correct, yeah. Geotechnical, natural resources, traffic studies, there's, you know, there's a lot of energy that goes into those. And I agree with Denise, it needs to happen in not a piecemeal fashion for some of those areas, just because of the way they are.
You can't.
But I mean, that's, trying to take this TSP-
Can you require a study of that entire length of road so that it doesn't get built in little pieces and increments?
That's what we're saying, is that that's been the problem. It's done, you know, piecemeal.
Right.
It has been done. We're trying to correct that.
Does this TSP have a mechanism built into it that says you can't start building pieces of the road until you've looked at the whole thing?
No.
See, I think that would be the responsibility of the city to do a broader look as opposed to developer A or B who comes in here and here and says, "Oh, I want to do these two things."
Right.
And I don't know how, I don't know what the mechanism is for us to do that.
Right, because if I were able to buy forty acres and develop my property, and I built a half-mile segment of that road, and then somebody else wants to connect their half-mile segment into it, and over time, it's going to get all built out. How do you control the fact that that engineering gets developed across the road?
At the time they planned the Park Place concept plan, it was all owned pretty much by one person.
Let me ask a question of that young lady over there, just being sitting there. And that's not fair.
I think she's picking on him.
There's all the stuff we've been talking about here, and I agree with Commissioner Griff. Is it legal? Can we deny a subdivision, let's say of a hundred acres? A plan development is going to put all that traffic that Tom says onto a substandard road. And we said, "I'm sorry, we got the water, we got the sewer, we got this, we got that, but we don't have the traffic." And it's five miles down the road that you're going to, the traffic generator from your project is going to really cause a public safety hazard. Can we deny it legally?
It depends.
Yeah, that's what I was hoping you'd say.
I knew that was the answer. I like that answer.
So in the hypothetical that we develop the rest of the road and become a cross-section, that geotechnical says we can't, at that point, do they just go back to the drawing board to figure out how to connect things?
Yes.
Of course, all that would take place at the administrative level before it ever got here. Tony would be in a position where he'd have to advise in a free application conference these developers as to what the commission is up against in terms of approving such a project.
Yes, that is correct. But then Tony's decision would be appealable to you or to the city commission?
Commission.
Then we'd have to be dealing with the coach that are in place.
At the time.
At the time. So this is a conceptual plan of where we think we will get connectivity. We know we have a value, we value connectivity, and this is where we think it will go. May not work out that way. And we may end up denying some subdivisions because natural resources or the steep slopes may not allow safe development. But we zone these areas to accommodate a certain number of houses, too. And so we sort of evaluated the amount of buildable land the city has.
That's based on the where. I'm talking about the when.
Well, the when is up to the developer.
Well, it's up to us.
Well.
Annexations.
I mean, it's in the city, it's zoned properly. He knows where he wants to build, but we say, "You can't build it now because our street system won't allow it to take place."
The reason we're doing this is so it is coordinated, so we're not going to have to say no, right? We've got these projects that are going to be funded in order for our improvement system to keep pace with development, the idea. Sometimes it doesn't work so well because we have folks like Malala who take all our capacity, and we end up denying subdivisions because things that are beyond our control take all the capacity we have, and then we have to make more improvements. Or we deny a subdivision because we don't have the capacity to accommodate it.
I think that's, you know, we really struggled with this when we went and did our system development charges two thousand and nine, two thousand and eight, two thousand and nine. Because, you know, off the top of my head, I believe, two thirteen is about over forty-five percent don't start or stop in Oregon City. But if you're a developer in Oregon City, you need to pay it for and account for that capacity that's been used. So essentially, you know, it's really prevalent on the edges where you have pass-through commuters. I mean, every jurisdiction deals with it. You know, we drive through multiple jurisdictions, drive up to Portland if you go up there. But it's how do you do that equitably? And how do you make those improvements that you can without absolutely putting a complete financial burden on your residents and your businesses in your own community? You know, it's kind of a double-edged sword. You know, you're either going to charge exorbitant SDCs to pick up capacity that doesn't start or stop in the city, or you're going to deny an application because you don't have a plan to upgrade the intersections. So for example, on two thirteen, we included a proportion of those state facility improvements in our system development charge. It's not our facility, but it's in our jurisdiction. And so those are some of the, you know, once again, it gets back to, what are you able to fund? Where do you prioritize your projects? And how can you maximize those funds that you have available to you? And really, that's what it's about. And, you know, could we go in and conceptually go in and do all the engineering work on a project that may not come in for fifteen years? We could. And would that be the best use of our resources? Probably not.
So at what point, Tony, would, what would trigger the improvement specifically that Tom was talking about at Redland Road? Would that be the result of a proposed development coming in and a traffic analysis happening? And you say, "Well, that road needs to be upgraded before we can approve that subdivision."
Right, and, you know, most of your transportation impact analysis is where you're going to find the level of service or view over seat deficiency is at the intersection. Why does Redland Road flood, you know, when it does? Is it a stormwater issue? Is it a culvert issue?
Abernathy Creek.
You know, there are different responses there, but typically, you know, I'm not aware of denying an application because during a hundred-year event or a fifty-year event, the road floods. I mean, you know, all of downtown Oregon City along Abernathy Creek and Main Street, you know, you'd have some significant issues there. So you're looking at, can you make safe turning movements onto the facility? Can you, do you have site distance? When you get to the intersection of two thirteen and Redland, what's it operating at? And what's the fix? Is it a longer, is it a longer green left turn signal for the dual lefts that are on there? Would that accommodate? That gets put into the model, and those are the things you look at.
Let me say one other thing. I know this is only conceptual, and I don't like to be negative, but during the last annexation of this area, the thing that was brought out was emergency vehicles, fire trucks and ambulances. They were saying that they could not get it up to the area in Livsey Road where there was critical needs. There was a gentleman there who had had heart attacks and other things. So they kept saying that that's, emergency vehicles can't get through here. So I still take it back to, unless there's significant improvements to Redland Road itself, we're talking about fire going out Redland Road or up in that area, ambulances. And Tony, I know it, I was here during that hundred-year, and I've seen it after that. And we thought, well, maybe it's every five years, but that area, because of Abernathy Creek, gets flooded a lot, and it doesn't take a lot of rain for Abernathy to fill up. But as I said, I know it's conceptual, but as I was told several times in contracts, if you don't raise the objections in the beginning, it's too late once you sign the contract. I've heard that when we signed for our home and for several other things. So that's why I'm raising it now. I don't have a lot of issues in the city. I'm pro-growth for a lot of things. But when it comes to Redland Road and that area, I protect the interest of our neighborhood association.
Well, I was going to tell you that, you know, people aren't going to be around forever.
Also let them have heart attacks.
No, I'm not saying that. I'm just saying that, you know?
I know what you mean.
It's not, it's not realistic to plan an extension of a road because somebody has a medical emergency.
Gee, that's what I said last annexation, but still, there's still, whether that person or another person, what about fire trucks and ambulances in that area?
Yeah, we can't.
I know.
So at this point, we have a line on paper that is subject to whatever development may or may not happen in the future, and-
It's conceptual, but it's still on paper.
And the reality is that whoever owns that property today is not going to own it forever. At some point, somebody-
They've already gone bankrupt.
Somebody may decide to develop that property.
Remember, I suggested that that area be turned into a natural area.
I agree.
So do we have any other questions for Carl or the staff in the work session?
There was a request by Damon to take a look at the reduction in the code for the pinkish area from thirty-five to twenty-five. And was there going to be some revision to that? To, he said, "Well, what does it compare?" He wanted to see a comparison.
Right.
And you were mentioning you could whip something up, but I know you've been busy, so I don't know about how the whipping happened.
Yeah, and I don't know if I was getting a consensus from the commission, planning commission at that point last week, so.
I think that was something we wanted to look at.
Yes, I think we did.
Okay. More than happy to, why don't you give me some specific direction about what you want to see? And be happy to-
Damon had requested, he thought that the thirty-five percent reduction was somewhat extreme, and that he wanted to recommend a twenty-five percent reduction.
Oh, yes, and that is, I apologize.
And he was going, he said, "Okay, how does that compare?"
Or just, yeah, what are the numbers?
What are the numbers? You know, is it significant? Or is it something that would be more palatable to that particular area of the community?
And I had a companion question that went along with that. I was curious if there was a summary of the inventory of parking compared to the amount of use in that area currently.
Yeah, and that's a whole different parking study. We're, that's something we won't be able to get to that next week. That's really something you would have to do as part of the scope of work of a parking study, akin with what was done with Rick Williams.
I was really asking if you had something like that. So we're kind of, in the sense of saying we're going to look at a fifty percent reduction, we're kind of shooting in the dark because we don't really know what the ratio of business to parking is today.
Well, we're making an extrapolation of what Rick Williams recommended for fifth through tenth, which is looking at a point seven spaces per thousand in his parking study. And actually, I was able to get ahold of Rick Williams last week. He, and I invited him to see if he could attend any of the planning commission meetings. He's unfortunately booked out this month, but he would be happy to write a letter to kind of give his comments based on our proposed code changes and how it relates to the parking study he did in oh-nine. That's forthcoming.
When Damon was raising the question about the thirty-five percent versus twenty-five percent, I was feeling the same way about the fifty percent reduction, is that without a baseline to know what you're comparing it to-
It's a shot and dart.
You know, and the fact that that's the most common complaint that you hear about people in the downtown cores, that they can't find a place to park. So I would also be curious to know if the business community has a feeling about that particular proposal.
Well, I was hoping they would show up tonight. I've been in contact with Amber Holwick with the Chamber of Commerce, Blaine Meyer, who's on one of their business subcommittees, and I was also on the Transportation Advisory Committee, and working with Lloyd Purdy with Main Street, Oregon City. And I've sat down and kind of walked through the code changes with them. And I encourage them to come tonight, speak on any concerns or support or thoughts on it. So I was hoping they were able to be here this evening, but they didn't. But I, my goal, not seeing them tonight, my goal is to give them a call to see if they do have any concerns or questions about, continuing about the process.
It sounded like Dan Fowler was promoting extending that fifty percent parking reduction area further to the east.
Is that true?
The north.
Yeah, which I would want to ask a question about that, because I don't really consider that part of downtown. And if this is specifically designed to help downtown, I don't see how that relates, extending it down to the Amtrak station, because that is, that's a pretty long, that's a pretty long distance. And I thank you for putting, pulling it up on there.
Yeah, it's another-
Least I can do over here.
It's another half a mile.
You're just awesome.
Well, you know, when I had the conversation, then I knew we wanted to be farther north than tenth, because there's the whole north end that has an urban forum and is having, has the most redevelopment opportunities. You know, the logical break is Abernathy Road.
I agree.
You know, I think what Dan was saying is here we have a transportation station, the Amtrak station, at the northern terminus of it. And would it make sense to take it to that? Because you are, kind of what we're saying through these parking reductions is we're saying these are areas that could and should have a higher urban development level. saying, these are areas that could and should have a higher urban development level. And should that be brought all the way to Amtrak Station as a way to kind of make that linear connection? I think that's always been the, at least in planning, some of the question of, you know, we have the Amtrak station in this location, but we kind of have this hole, a donut hole, the north end, that at this time is not really an urban form to pull people in a transit or walking or biking connection to where we have our downtown. And so, I mean, I do see what he's saying is, why don't you use the Amtrak station as a normal northern terminus rather than Abernathy, because then you can better ensure that you have an urban form all the way connecting it. You know, but we broke it at Abernathy Road because that made the most sense, because as you get north of Abernathy Road, it's harder to make a case. Though, I think what Dan is saying is a reasonable case. But we did not go there at this time. But that is something that planning commission can definitely look into if that makes sense to that area.
Okay, I got that one off my boost.
Yeah, I think I would like to see some, some basis, statistical basis for why the 50% reduction makes more sense than, say, a 35% reduction.
Okay.
It makes sense to me to bring, to raise that northern border to Amtrak.
Does anybody else in the planning commission have any additional direction on that border?
Just to add to that, I think of how other, you know, mainly European cities extend outward in some direction from rail. And, you know, it's something unique that we have, is we have an Amtrak station connected closely to our downtown, but we have that hole. And it could buy, it could increase development to fill that hole. And, you know, in 10 or 20 years, it could be directly a continuous line through downtown. That's how I see it.
I'd love to see the train station back downtown, where it used to be too.
So, I mean, I can, at next week's meeting, provide an alternative map that shows just the west side of Washington Street, north of Abernathy Road, that includes the Amtrak station.
Can you pull that down again, Carl? No, just bring it down to where the-
So, I can show, you would see, it would not include the piece that the city owns north, but it would, I can show it stopping at the north end of the Amtrak station parcel on the west, just the west side of Washington Street.
Right.
Yeah, I, again, I concur with Charles in the sense, particularly about, you know, the McLaughlin neighborhood. I think, again, I think we'll have better sell if it's gradual. I think, I think we need to really look at the 25% versus the 35%. It's not the same as downtown. We also need to, you know, to look at, not, in some cases, we need to look at some of the uses that are going on there. We have, I noticed that our, where we used to have the call center for the window place, which was causing a major parking problem. We now have a dance studio, which it's almost the same and even more of a problem, because there, all of a sudden, you have people who don't know our neighborhood, who are coming in and parking just anywhere, and the funeral home's complaining again. And I said, well, you know, you've got to use enforcement. If they're parking in your lot, then you have them towed, and they won't park there again.
So, what I'm hearing from the planning commission for next week is show a revised map. I'll show what a 25% reduction looks like from McLaughlin. And for the, once again, I think for the 50% reduction, what, the reason I'm just confused is barring paying for a parking study, I'm just having trouble trying to figure out what exact information you want me to provide next week.
I guess I'm just groping for some, some basis for saying, what do we have now? And what does that represent as 50% less of that?
Well, let me go back to the parking study then. So, we have .7 spaces per thousand is what Rick Williams recommended from 5th through 10th. So, right now, our current parking requirement for retail is 4.1 spaces per thousand. So, 4.1 spaces per thousand, that's like a 75% reduction. And office would be 2.7 spaces per thousand, so you're closer to the 50% reduction. So, we extrapolated that out and looked at the northern end, knowing that we weren't going to be at that level, but what made more sense, knowing the northern end. And that, I mean, that's what the 50% came down to, was looking at, how do we make it a little bit bigger, knowing that we're going to be taking this not-so-perfect urban form that you have in the 5th through 10th? So, that's where we got the 50%, was really a reduction of those figures.
I think what you, let me see if I can, I think what you're asking is, do we know specifically how many parking spaces are in the downtown core?
5th through 10th, we do.
Okay, so, you know what that number is. So, if there was a 50% reduction, what would that be for a new use that's coming in? So, we have, we have this number, which is a baseline. And we're saying, right now, we require X. So, there's the existing inventory, there's the current code number, and then what is that number that would be the 50% reduction of the requirement that we have now? Is that, am I getting there? Because I mean, I'm not a math, I'm not a math genius here.
Well, there's, and this is where I think, you know, through the parking study, they went with, they found the real parking demand, and that's what Rick identified, which is the .7. And that, that number came out of that parking study, based on the analysis of how the spaces-
Is that parking study available for us to see?
Yep, it is, absolutely. It's online, and I can give you a link to it tomorrow.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Yeah, so I think the key is-
Because it's hard to know when, when you hear 50% reduction of what? You know, what's that compared to? So, if we have a baseline, and you can look at the baseline and understand how that interprets.
Right. And I think the harder part is because we're, this is our opportunity to make amendments to this code, and we don't have a 10th through 17th parking study that's part of this process.
Right, but if we can look at what's available.
We can extrapolate from there from 10th to 17th.
So, what I'm saying is, it's still going to be an extrapolation, because you're going to have more on-street parking opportunities in the north end than you do now, and you're going to have a lower use than you have now of the north end parking. It's useless than you have in this 5th through 10th. So, it's going to be a lower demand, but a higher ability for redevelopment. So, all you really can do is extrapolate beyond doing a new parking study.
Right. Yeah, I think, for me, that would be helpful.
Okay, so, absolutely. I can give you the revised graph, the 25%, revised map showing Amtrak, as well as the link to the 2009 parking study.
Okay. Do we have any other questions or things that we'd like to see?
I don't know if I'd like to see it, but I, I guess I would like maybe the Cliff Notes version, because page 23 bothered me a little bit from the standpoint that I know we're looking out to 2035. And I was looking at table five, or figure, figure five, yeah, figure five, and I'm looking at all of the lines, green, yellow, I guess one of them's orange, and saying, you know, and you have the key, which was good, because they congested well below speed limit, slowing well below speed limit. So, I'm trying to extrapolate in my head, you know, and in 2035, I might be 100, so I probably am not going to be around.
Yeah, you're right.
I am? Okay. All right, so we're, so we're saying on page 23, the paragraph that you pointed out, you're saying that travel activity is reflected by evening peak hour motor vehicle trips beginning and ending in Oregon City is expected to increase by 75% through 2035. So, you know, first red light goes off. And then you say that the trips that don't begin to end, but they're coming through, are going to increase generally. And because that's because of Malala and Candy and whatever else is going on. So, then you go down through your, through the statement here, and where it says that regional roadways such as 205, et cetera, will generally have less impact in Oregon City compared to 99E. And I said to myself, hmm, I remember a month ago, a helicopter flying around early in the morning, where there was an accident on 205. 99 backed up, 213 backed up. It was just that one little linchpin, where all these, you know, the, it's kind of like the high tide with the flood at the same time, and everything backed up. I can tell you from personal experience, it took me 25 minutes to get down Singer Hill that day. That was not 2035, and that was just an accident. That wasn't even-
Did you drive or walk? Because walking would have been a lot faster.
I was driving. And, you know, I think I know all the shortcuts. So, I was looking at this thinking, okay. And then you're saying, other roadways will experience average travel speeds well below posted speed limits. Well, you know my complaint about speed? Nobody, even in congestion, they're not driving the posted speed limit or below. My street, Washington Street, is posted at 25 miles an hour. It is, they do not drive below that. And in congestion, I, you know, well, in 100 years, because that's how old I'll be in 2035, I just, I'm trying to extrapolate down that everybody would be going 25 miles an hour because there's so much congestion. I mean, that would, that would be lovely if they were, but then no one would be able to get across the street or get anywhere, because it would be so congested. So, I'm having a hard time extrapolating into the future because of, of my own reality of what I see and what I observe on a regular basis. And I'm, and I'm hoping that there's some magic bullet to why this statement was made. I mean, we all, we all live in different areas of the city, so we all have our own realities about what happens in our neighborhood and the broader picture. Because, Carl, I was told when the Home Depot was built down there, oh, that's not going to increase congestion on Washington Street.
Liars.
Well, I, no, they weren't lying. It just was based on some formula they did in the traffic plan, and I, you know.
I know, I know.
It's not real. It has increased the congestion on the street.
Which has slowed all those people down.
Well, it's all those people walking back and forth to church that I worry about are trying to get across Washington Street.
So, are you looking for a response from us, or?
Well, I'm just trying to figure out what, what's the reality, you know? Which is, which reality is more real?
Denise, specifically what part of that statement did you-
I can make, I can make one responsible go from there.
Sure, I mean, I'm not expecting a right answer.
So, the diagram is an illustration of the congestion on an average weekday. This is recurring, every day kind of thing. This isn't once in a while, I have an accident on 205 kind of thing. It's something you can expect to see every day.
Once every hundred years.
And so, it's just comparing the speed conditions on a handful of arterials and collectors in the city compared to what it's posted. It was just a way for us to represent future congestion levels in a way that's different than what you normally see. Because normally, everybody gets excited about intersections. The fact of the matter is, the whole corridors are going to be running slower during certain hours of the day, and that's just a way to illustrate that.
And it should be noted that these are actually based upon three years of hourly speed data that we actually got from ODOT, they collected via NREC. So, these segments here, we have hourly speeds for these roads, and we extrapolated that with our model through 2035, and just kind of did increment growth in speed, and that's how we came to these future speeds through 2035.
Well, I hope it's true, because it's not, it's not my reality.
Sure.
And they had an accident Monday.
Yeah.
Not last Monday on 205. Didn't back it up for 25 minutes getting down, but you could tell everybody was trying to get off, and they came down the 213, the interchange, and they were on 99, I mean, on McLaughlin Boulevard in Oregon City. And it, you always know. I mean, if you live here, you know that, oh, there's an accident, so you have to allow more time, you have to do whatever. And particularly when, you know, at 5:00 in the morning, the helicopter's going off, and I think, okay, where's the accident? That's the first thing I say. I think, okay, where's the accident?
Denise, one of the responses I would have to that, because, yeah, everything's growing, right? But a lot of the recommendations in our TSP, in the county's TSP, what the state's looking at, are these transportation management options. So, more signage that's going to be active. And, you know, so if you, if there is an accident on 205, or if there is an accident on 99E, signage that would inform the public to let them know. And so, I don't, I'm not sure how it's going to really play out in 2035, but those are the kind of things, I think, our smartphones are going to start, you know, maybe interacting with us and telling us, you know, go a different direction for that particular incident.
You're not supposed to be driving and using our phones, so we don't want to, we don't want to say that.
Maybe we won't even be driving at that point in time. I don't really know, but-
Your hover car will respond automatically.
Generally, we all agree, growth is going to happen, and this document is about planning for that.
I want to see managed growth.
Responsible growth.
Yeah, I mean, everybody wants it to be managed in a way that makes their community more livable and safe. And I think that's, that's a reasonable goal. It's just sometimes when I, when I read some of these things, and you have, you've lived in a place for a very long time, and you've seen things change over time, and you know what the patterns are, it's a little hard to digest it when you're looking at, at the abstract, because sure, ODOT may have done some counts and all that, but, you know, maybe I need to get my own counter and tell you how many cars are zipping around town and speeding and doing whatever. Because it has a lot to do with, thanks to John and pavement, you can tell if the car is going too fast on the pavement. It makes a different noise and a different sound than if they're going to speed limits. Pretty interesting.
That same accident on 205 backs it up 213.
It did, it did that day.
And out Abernathy.
Yeah, it's just, it's like one of those ripples, it just all, you know.
So, do we have any more comments or questions specifically?
I just want to-
Not on TSP. It's a, it's a CPO question that, for Tony. And I guess here's, I know you mentioned it was a city council thing, city commission thing?
I didn't mention it.
Okay, well, somebody, anyway, so here, here's a question I wrote down. So, is, we don't know this, the area, I know I've seen a map in the past of all the CPOs that the county has recognized. And I don't know what CPO the Holly Lane area falls in, because frankly, it hasn't been on my radar. But I would think that if the county has recognized a CPO, and it's really working the way it is, and, you know, there's a hamlet up in Mount Hood that has recognition, if Beaver Creek has been, has received a hamlet designation, it seems to me that if there are people who are truly, and I mean, you know what I mean by representation, that they don't just show up and say that they're representing without, you know, my organization voted, and here's, here's our contention, that those folks should have the same courtesy. That if they are truly, and I'm pretty sure that the county did designate all these areas. One of the things that kind of concerns me is that if there is a real concern with the folks on Holly Lane, this seems to me, this would be a perfect opportunity for them to come together and organize themselves. Not only whether they're opposed to something, but they obviously are for some things. And, you know, the county, we've mentioned several times that the county's doing a TSP. I would really be interested, and I'll ask Christine this, how many people are going to the CPO meetings, if they have them? And are they going to the county TSP? Because there are numerous opportunities for people to be involved. And I, I get a little discouraged from the standpoint that there are these opportunities, and I would like to encourage people, for whatever reason that they're organizing, it'll make their place a better place. It's nothing, it's nothing we can do.
Those same people expect Christine to do it all.
Well, yeah, and Christine's only one person, and she can't.
I, just to have one comment maybe before we close, and that is, to my fellow commissioners, I may be new at a lot of this, and I may not always express myself clearly like Denise does, but I thought about this a lot today about Redland Road, and I felt like maybe you didn't understand how, how serious that situation is to people in that area. I felt kind of it was passed over, that, well, people who moved out to that area, they should have known better. I heard that about where I moved, you should have known better before you moved there.
My move was off of Redland.
The point is that there's a lot of neighbors out there, there's neighborhood associations, and it impacts all of Holly Lane, the CPO, and it impacts all those people. And for years now, it's 10 years that they've been asking, and they've been, they went to all these meetings and kept saying concerns about that. And yet, it just seems to, whenever I bring it up, like tonight, I felt kind of like it got passed over a little bit, like it, people shouldn't have moved there if they didn't know that.
I just said, I said- I just said, I said devil's dead.
Yeah, I know.
There's two extremes.
Oh, I know, but that's this concern that I, I keep getting, that no one seems to understand that, or it's the county's problem to improve that. But we keep saying, if they're going to bring all these homes and do all this stuff, what about improving the transportation in that area? You talked about two oh five and the accidents. It backs up Redland, it backs up Holcomb, any accidents on two oh five, because it impacts two thirteen, which impacts that whole Redland Road area. And unless that's someday improved, even though it's conceptual, as we said earlier, it's still, again, if, if I say, okay, great, this is a great transportation plan, and all those people are going to come back at me and say, well, you didn't push enough about the fact that Redland Road impacts that whole area of Park Place. And they were mostly impacted when they were doing, redoing the bridge down there, because they had to find a whole new area to get out of Park Place because they couldn't get down through that area, and that whole plan was, how do people in that whole area, all the way out Holcomb, find a way out once they closed Abernathy and the Redland Road exchange because of what they were doing there on two thirteen? And so, this is a major concern, and I just want to impress that.
Tom, my point of view is, I don't think anybody's minimizing that, but we're also looking at the, what's the reality? Who's going to pay for that?
Yeah, why is it Oregon City responsible to raise the road up?
The reason I was asking the question about funding, what's the trigger that causes that area to get funded? That, you know, I think it's been made pretty abundantly clear that Oregon City doesn't have a gigantic fund of money to go down and just start improving roads, because the truth of the matter is, depending on what neighborhood that you live in, every neighborhood has their head project.
Has their Redland Road.
Every single neighborhood around here has their own Redland Road. And so, unless, like Bob said last week, if you had two hundred and forty million dollars, we have no problem. But the problem is, funding is limited. So, the question is, what is it that triggers that improvement that you're concerned about?
And that's the growth there.
And so, before they're allowed to build the fourteen hundred units there, they've got to do a transportation study.
But what I'm saying is that the annexations that keep coming through that area have been turned down three times because they can't, because of those, the transportation.
That's why I say it's a chicken and egg thing.
Yeah.
The improvements will never happen as long as they deny the annexation. But the annexation bring the growth that allows that improvement.
Our area, as you said, Beaver Creek was eleven hundred, this was fourteen hundred homes and more traffic on, on that area, and it's a big concern for people.
And I hate to tell you that raising that road, let's say you raise it five feet, isn't going to change the congestion at all.
No, but while they're doing that, I mean, for the flood plain, while they're doing.
But it may cause more problems.
Well, it may eliminate the flooding problem, but you're not going to eliminate that congestion problem there unless you widen the road. And that goes to this whole study about trying to build a road that accommodates the, the traffic for twenty-two hours a day, not the two hours a day that you have peak.
Well, that's morning and night, that's two, three, morning and night.
Well, no, one in the morning and one at night, and that's everyone in town. So, what I'm saying is, it's not just that road. There is a Redland Road that is what I would call a pinch point at every major gateway into Oregon City.
And that's true, but I see plans for roads in that area, but nothing specifically about how they're going to widen or do anything to Redland, yet on the conceptual plan, all those fourteen hundred homes, without a plan of attack of how their transportation is going to go, with that same growth. South End has all those plans in there, but what I'm saying, on the conceptual plan, they've got those, but not the idea of how its, people are going to get to those. And they come, you're right, the egg and the chicken and the egg, but without a plan of that, how can you even plan the other?
I don't, I don't really know what the, the answer is.
I just keep thinking you should have both on the floor.
With regard to Redland Road, because I can see that, let's say the road gets raised up, well.
Or widened.
Doesn't, or widen, doesn't that then cause, if there's flooding, cause that to back up someplace else that didn't back up before? So, I mean, it's, it's like you solve one problem, but you may be creating four or five other problems that then have to get solved, which then create, you know, other problems. And, and who, you know, and who knows, you know, maybe there was never any flooding there until Redland Road got put in and raised up to where it is, because it was a wagon road. I mean, that's what it was. My, my father-in-law told me stories of them coming to Oregon City.
Down Holcomb is the end of the Oregon Trail.
Well, they, they came down Springwater to Redland Road, and it was a two-lane, you know, wagon road. There was no improvement.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I don't think that we'll ever be able to have a perfect planning system in a free enterprise system that we live in, based on property rights, willing property owners, in an underfunded system that we exist in. We're just not going to have it. And therein lies the problem. We're putting together a jigsaw puzzle here based on application, economy-driven, applications that are placed before us. And it's not a perfect, perfect system, and it's underfunded. If we had five hundred million dollars at our disposal, these problems wouldn't exist.
Last week you said it was two hundred.
There's been some inflation between last week and this week.
I'm throwing in sewers.
Yeah, because we have to replace all of our water lines. We won't have anywhere to drive because we won't have any water to drink.
But we're just confronted every time with patchwork applications. We've got a transportation plan here, and the city now is dealing with a water rollback situation. And we've got concept plans, and we've got this, and we've got that, and we're trying, we're trying to do this, and we don't have the money to, to apply the solution. Tom, if we had the money to, and if we had the authority, we would. But we're, we're a, we're a planning commission of reaction.
Yeah.
We're a planning commission of, and, and you talk about reality checks, that's the reality that we have to deal with and the public has to deal with. And, and we have to so live with it, you know, so, so we have to live with it and do the best we can in the public, in the public's benefit. So, anyway, I'm going to get my pour out of the water here.
You know, I, I'd like to wrap up our work session. I, I've got one concern. We're coming back in two weeks with, I, I believe the anticipation is that we're going to get to a point where we can approve a plan. But I'm hearing from the public testimony and from the conversation we're having, that there's some loose ends in the plan. And, you know, the, the issue that Mr. O'Brien brought up about the road going right through the Reprovis Park, you know, those kinds of things. And so, I just have a little apprehension that we're going to come back here on April eighth with the expectation that the commission is going to.
Be voting.
Vote in approval of this plan. And I'm not sure that we're going to be prepared to say that all the i's are dotted and the t's are crossed and say, yeah, we're okay with sending this plan on to the city commission. So, I'm just going to throw that out. I don't know how that gets resolved in two weeks.
As O'Brien put it, not ready for prime time.
Well, I, I'm just saying.
Well, let me just speak to that one in particular. First of all, we, we couldn't find this page that he was referring to that had Saint Helens listed in it, because it's not part of the plan. It's part of an ancillary document that isn't part of this plan.
Okay.
The arrow, we're going to find those kind of things, just because there's an arrow on, on, I mean.
An arrow, I mean, arrow, yeah, arrow.
An arrow.
Arrow, arrow.
An arrow on the plan. I mean, I think that one there we can fix, but we're, you know, there's so much detail in this thing.
Right.
What if there's a small line that shows a segment of sidewalk that's not shown quite in the right place? Does that, that's kind of, you know, I want this to be as accurate as we can get it, but my sense is, if you're looking for, if you're specifically looking for mistakes in this document to dispute the legitimacy of the document, you're probably going to find them. And, I don't know, I.
You already said that if people found grammar errors or mapping errors, that they were to let you know as opposed to bringing them here. So, you were on the record, you were very clear about that.
Well, I mean, I've been communicating with Tom via email over, he wanted to know history of SDCs. That took me some effort. I responded, he responded back. It would have been nice to have heard that there's some mistakes, John, that need to be fixed, when we, we deal with those as we, as we find them or hear about them.
So, John, we're not arguing with you. My concern is that we're going to take public testimony in two weeks. And if people are coming forward with a bunch of those kind of things, how do we, how do we, how do we accept this plan and say, it's good enough to send to the city commission?
Well, that's what we're asking you to do, and, I mean, we've been through a lot of review. We've looked at it, I mean, I think.
I, I guess I'm just kind of throwing out the challenge that if, if we have known issues in, between now and April eighth, somebody ought to be doing the due diligence necessary to make it possible for us to have a clean plan.
I guess it'd be nice if we could focus on, on the policies and the larger part, scrivener's errors and whatnot. Just forward them on, and we will, we will edit the document. They're, they're honestly somewhat, you know, we, we will deal with those. If you catch some errors with those and periods and commas, just let us know via an email, and we will change it in the adopted.
I'm not talking about that.
Okay, I just would really like to focus on.
Set down to Laura.
More than that, are we going to know about what Christine brought up about the geological?
We've already talked about.
I know, but.
That doesn't have any relevance to this plan until somebody decides to develop that road.
All right.
It's a line on paper. So, until somebody says, I'm going to build a road there, there's, there's no engineering to say it's either feasible or not.
But I think the public here is that we're approving something that's conceptual, and they say, well, then it means you're approving something without going through these processes.
Well, we're not approving anybody to build anything.
No.
So, that's what they, that's what the public.
Well, I know, that's why I said they think it's, it's set in stone, and we have to continually go back to say, this is a concept plan, it is not etched in stone.
See, specifically related to her comment, that road is not identified as a project. It's just a line. It's not even a, a project.
But to her, it's on the plan.
But it's not even, it's not even in the second tier of unfunded projects. So, it's off the, it's off the radar screen as far as this plan was concerned.
Is that a hundred years when twenty thirty-five?
If somebody annexed that area, and then they said, I'm going to develop that area, it jumps onto the radar screen.
I guess, one, one way, if you'd like to make a motion to remove that road from the project, I think that, that would be the appropriate way to deal with this. We're, we're not going to do additional studies at this time. We're, so, you know, we can continue to, to, to talk about this, but really, to get to the, the issue, I think it's, it's, you know, you can pull out the things that we want to have votes on, and we can, we can have those votes. And I think what we'll do is we'll think about, you know, you've got a lot of questions about parking and whatnot. We're, I mean, we're not going to get through this at the next meeting. So, you know, we'll, we'll go back and look, and, and, you know, there, there are parts of this maybe that we can move forward, hold a part back, you know, I don't know, historically what we've done, we've done code changes before, and we've continued it to six months out, because we always know we're going to find stuff when we start getting into it. So, we're going to, we'll go back, we'll look at what the options are, you know, if we can identify those parts that we can move forward. If we can't, we can't, you know. So, until you're ready to move it, you know, that, that's what it comes down to. So, you know, as you're thinking about this over the next two weeks, or as you're reading information, if you can email us what you have, whether it's, you know, arrows, errors, grammar, whatever, you know, then, then we can start working through those and try and get you the document that then you're comfortable with. And if there are specific issues in this document that, you know, we, we've talked around tonight, and you want to make a motion to either remove, not recommend, you know, please be ready to, to do that, because I think that's the only way we're going to be able to move some of these things. We can talk about Holly Lane, we talked about it for a year at Park Place, we could talk about it longer here. So, I think that's, you know, probably the best way to try and address some of these issues that are in here.
And, and I, I don't want to hold the entire document hostage over one line on the paper.
Right, so.
So, I mean, if it comes down to, we can't get a consensus on the whole document because of that little dotted line on that piece of paper, I would support removing the line, so we can move forward if that's what it takes.
And I guess we, we, you know, because we did adopt that by ordinance. I mean, we didn't add any more lines in Park Place, and we didn't add any more lines in Beaver Creek. Those were adopted via concept plans by the ordinance by the city commission, of which everyone had an opportunity to appeal that decision.
And I think from my point of view, realistically, we're down to the, the little tiny details here. The, the overall document is very well-prepared from my point of view, and we're just down to little details.
Tony, help me out here a little bit. I don't, it's not my drive here to make a motion to pull out that road. As you say, it's in the concept plan, and they had a chance to appeal it, and several people did, I did, several times. But it's, that's not what I'm getting at, is I'm getting at, why isn't there something to improve an area, to get to that area? If it's, if they want that there, why not have that there too? But I know it's conceptual, but what I'm thinking is, my constituents back in Park Place area and people like Christine and Holly Lane are going to say, well, how could you have voted for it?
And realize we have constituents on the planning commission.
We, we don't.
No, I'm just saying in the public, you know, the people who I've known for years, and I know I have to go on what, based on what's here. But also, I have some beliefs too, but I'm not trying to say pull that from the plan, because it's already in Park Place, concept plan. I'm just saying that's a concern for several people that if, they see it, even though we've all talked about it, they see it, it's in concrete. That, that road's going to happen. For Christine, that's going to happen as long as she sees it, and anybody in that area is going to say, well, that's going to happen. Even though it's conceptual, it's been there on the concept plan. So, how do I deal with all that? I'm not sure, I don't want to say pull it, but do I just say, okay, I forgive anything or forget anything I've thought about that road and just go ahead and approve the plan? Or, I don't know, I'm, as I said, I'm kind of.
Not sure how to remedy a situation. If, if we can't put a, a, a needed north-south connection on a map, how do you ever get the needed north-south connect? I mean, you can look at it from, at some point, you have to put down concepts to meet the goals and policies of your comprehensive plan and your transportation system. I, I don't, I don't have an answer for you of how you answer that.
There is no answer.
As I said, I didn't want to be argumentative, but it's just.
Well, it's not, I'm not trying to be argumentative, it's just, at some point, we have to start moving these a little bit. And if, so if it's a motion to raise Redland Road, you know, I think that's something that this commission should vote on, if that's something that you're passionate about. I, I, just trying to get you, you know, we could sit here and talk another two hours about culverts and height of Redland Road, but at some point, we have to make a decision on that.
Okay.
The other little driver, the other little driver on this project is, is just the way that the work that goes in this is funded, and there's a dead, you know, the, the end of this fiscal year, there's a deadline, and I don't. My sense is, we'll, we'll either, staff time is one thing, but our consultants' time, you know, they've, they've kind of, it's, it's been many months.
That's why he's going on vacation.
I've forgotten the timeline on this, but we've got a lot, and so.
Carnival cruise.
Well, John, and, and just, just so you know, I mean, one of the things that I totally recognize is that you all have been immersed in this, and you know it backwards and forwards, and, you know, I don't know how you feel about it, but you may be sick of it by now. Those of us who have not been immersed in it are reading it with fresh eyes and seeing something completely different. And, you know, I thought about getting, and I've gone online and made comments and submitted stuff as, as was requested, but, you know, for my own personal thing, I decided not to get super immersed in this because I wanted to be able to just look at it for what it was. That's, I'm just speaking for myself, so we have other commissioners on here. Again, we are looking at this for the last month with, you know, totally not being immersed in it.
Exactly.
And so, you have to cut us a little bit of slack, because we're not going to pick it up as quickly as you guys have, because, again, you've been eating, breathing, and sleeping this thing, and I'm sure you're going to be so glad when it's over. I know I am.
Start the next one.
I know, I know, and I'm, we're going to know more about sewers and water than we ever wanted to know in our entire lives. But, you know, we will be informed, because when people come up to us and ask us questions, we can say, by the way, in the city's TSP or the systems plan for sewers, it, this is the problem, you know, you think it's this, we know it's this. So, you know, I say more information the merrier, but believe me, my head is full of this right now, and it's like trying to digest it all and try to comprehend what the implications are, are, I mean, this, that, you know, that's a lot of work. I thank you for the two-week break, because if we'd had another planning commission next week, I think I was going to just kill myself.
Come to our CIC meeting.
No, no, thank you.
Before we adjourn.
I'm going to be washing my hair that night.
Before we adjourn, I just want to make sure that staff has the direction, the information to provide to you at the next planning commission hearing. So, we're going to come back. to provide to you at the next planning commission hearing. So we're going to come back and talk to you more about parking reductions and those percentages. We're also going to talk to you about level of service. And we will send a request to Clackamas County to have their transportation people come and talk to you about their transportation system plan update. Is there anything else?
You're going to send us the link to those parking reports.
Oh, yeah.
So we'll have it read by the time we, those of us that want to read it, we'll have it read, and we will comprehend and understand.
And, and other than that, the rest of the report will just be perfect.
I'm going to, I'm going to do a Cliff Notes version of it.
They're never perfect.
So, and that, and that goes for you guys too. I mean, I know you guys have been like, like, woo. So thank you for answering our, you know, some of my questions, I'm sure were ridiculous, and, you know, if I had read more.
You've done a heck of a job.